All right, that makes us official. All right, welcome everybody to our Tuesday, May 16th, regular council meeting. We are, of course, meeting here in person at City Hall with the Zoom option. If people can't make it or just want to be more comfortable at the meeting, you guys can dial in from home these days, so. We are going to start off with our invocation given by Councilmember Dan Dunn, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
Father in heaven, we are grateful for this opportunity to come together, together as a community, to listen and to speak in this place we call home. Inspire in us imagination and courage to do the right thing. Amen.
All right, I'm going to call a meeting to order here at 7:02. Start off by a roll call. Councilmember Cargill.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Van Orman here. Mayor Pro Tem Foliar.
Here.
Councilmember Spencer.
Present.
Councilmember Dunn.
Happy to be here.
And Councilmember Salberg.
Here.
All right, all present and accounted for. We will jump into agenda approval. Mayor Pro Tem.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as published.
So moved.
We have, it's okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve the agenda as printed. Any discussion? Not seeing any. All in favor of approving the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes seven zero. All right, we are on to citizen comments. I will do my usual spiel at the beginning with an additional reminder. So for those in the audience who haven't been through my little dialogue here, so. Citizen comments are strictly that. They are a comment to the council for us to all listen here and not respond. If there is some, a topic that we. Well, we need to follow up with you on, we'll make sure we have all of your contact information and one of the staff members will follow up. The time limit is three minutes and you'll see a timer pop up on the screens up here and we, I will be stopping anybody at three minutes. Make sure everybody gets their fair share and not go over. If you note on tonight's agenda, we have the citizen comments, but we also have the second read of. Of ordinance 119c. So there is also a citizen comment period as part of a second read on an ordinance. So for those of you who want to speak. You can, you can have this opportunity or you can have the opportunity after the council has their discussion. So. That's up to you. If you've turned in the yellow sheet and you wanted to defer to that piece of the, piece of the public comment on the ordinance, you can very well do that. So. Same rules will apply three minutes. And for those online, if you have a, would like to make a comment, please just send a note to Todd in the chat. He's our meeting host and he'll let me know. So I guess moving on, we will go ahead and I don't think that these are in any particular order and if I mess up your name, I really apologize. June Berkowitz. Oh, and just another reminder, please, in your note, don't remind me of this, please let us know if you live within the city of Liberty Lake city limits or outside.
Just outside. Thank you. Compassion, empathy, patience, kindness and grace. These attributes are necessary in order to have a functioning civil society. Now more than ever, our elected officials need to take a hard look inside their own heart and mind and question their own motives and the decisions they make for the common good of Liberty Lake. Do each of you operate with these distinctive traits or are you more concerned about your own reelection? And eager to please hate-filled angry residents who believe kids are being groomed to be LGBTQ? And that LGBTQ residents are not welcome here because they are different. This council is considering passing an ordinance to allow it to ban books. And the first book you intend to ban, gender queer, is setting off into a very dangerous direction for the city. Banning this book provides silent approval to persecute anyone deemed the other in this community. Whether you connect the dots or not, each book you ban will be normalizing hate in Liberty Lake. Some of our leaders, elected officials and constituents lack the critical thinking skills required. To understand the difference between fact and fiction when listening to today's manufactured news. Some believe the LGBTQ community is responsible for some of society's woes, which is a huge distraction from other much larger, more serious issues such as. Lack of gun control, suicides, lack of affordable childcare and healthcare, climate change and income inequality. Much of the disinformation we digest is pure fear mongering, stirring up all kinds of unnecessary hate and anger. This fear mongering directly results in bullying, harassment, lockdowns and mass shootings. Unfortunately, each of these actions are occurring regularly in Spokane County as this fear mongering. Continues and even recently at Ridgeline High School where it was buried from public view by authorities. Book banning will result in fewer personal freedoms for Liberty Lake residents and will breed even more hate and intolerance in this community. Passing this ordinance demonstrates this council's lack of compassion, kindness, empathy, patience and grace. Character matters. Especially in elected officials. This ordinance is undemocratic and uncivil. The polar opposite of what is needed to activate your intended goal.
We can revoke you for disrupting the meeting if you continue.
Anything less is tyranny.
Again, everybody, again, reminder, and I'm not trying to be rude. This is an opportunity for everybody to get the fair three minutes and not over. So please be respectful of the time limit. All right, next person, Joy Moore.
So I'm speaking responding to ordinance number 119c. And I would like to address my comments to Mayor Pro Tem Phil and to Councilwoman Wendy. Our library board and citizens have been whiplashed for seven months by four people, spearheaded by Mr. Cargill. Who has publicly stated he's building a house in Hayden, Idaho. He has his business bringing big name speakers to North Idaho. His energy is not here. I beg you to, who are citizens of Liberty Lake, to show us your integrity and your backbone. Please vote this ordinance down. Give our city, our council and our city back its integrity. Show us that we can have a functional government. And if they can't, Mayor Chris, I hope you use your power of veto. Don't just hide behind pretty words. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have Joe Pitt.
My name is Joe Pitt. I'm a resident and voter here in Liberty Lake. I've attended more city council meetings in the last seven or eight months than I have combined in all the years I've lived here and it's, it's interesting to me that the. The storyline over the council's takeover of the library has shifted over this seven month and I'm going to call it a saga. Yes, we're still concerned about the council banning books and the wording that they won't initiate a book ban is not particularly comforting. When members of the council voted to ban a book last year, they didn't initiate the action. It came from a library patron in the community. But the shift in the story I want to talk about that's emerged over these many meetings is that four members of the council that determine that they alone own the truth in this issue. Over the 20 some years since this city was formed, I suspect that this issue. Is generating more public comments than any other issue before the council. It's putting more butts in seats. Generating more comments and letters. People even marched in the streets, which is pretty much unheard of in this golf cart friendly community that we live in. Yet despite overwhelming opposition to this ordinance, four members of this council are bound and determined to shove this down our throats. If we had 12,000 residents here tonight, it likely would not change the outcome. So for the sake of the appointed members of this council who support this travesty, let me explain how this works. Yes, you're sitting in the seats that have the votes to determine this action. But we're sitting in the seats that determine if you'll continue to serve in this council. And by your actions, you've created a group of voters who are angry, motivated and are now single issue voters. At the next election, we'll be supporting candidates who represent our views, not politicians with an agenda that's obviously an overt power grab. Now it's possible that you believe that we are a vocal minority on this topic, but I don't think so. If you stand at the corner of Liberty Lake Road and Country Vista, holding a protest sign as I did. You'll encounter the motorists who stop at the stoplights and they fall into three categories. The first one is a group that says, what are you protesting? And we say, well, you know, the city council is trying to take over the library and they say, wow, I haven't heard about that. That's wrong and I don't agree with it. The second group asks, when they say they've heard or read about this issue and yet they still definitely don't agree with what you're doing. The third group is already honking and waving and they yell out the words of the effect of, we're mad as hell and we're not going to take it anymore. In the hour I stood there, I never encountered a single motorist in support of this ordinance. There was no one willing to have a 30 second red light debate to support this overreach. Now admittedly, it's an unscientific straw poll, but a likely barometer of the next election. You may feel that tonight's vote is finally over, but for those of us here, the work has just begun.
Thank you. All right, and just, just, and I apologize, I do need to make one quick correction. The, the book. Challenge a year, a year and a half ago, which kind of kicked all this stuff out. It was actually the library board's decision to not. Ban that book was actually upheld by the council. It was not unanimous, but it was not banned. I just want to make sure everybody's clear on that. All right, Travis Hunt.
Evening, I'm Travis Hunt. I live in Green Acres. I am a substitute and former high school teacher at Ridgeline. I work as a physician assistant in Liberty Lake and I do much of my author work at the Liberty Lake Municipal Library. The pioneering physicist Richard Feynman said, "Science is a way of trying not to fool yourself." So if I ask my Texas relatives, what's a classic American Thanksgiving dinner? They'd say, bless your heart for asking. My dear Yankee nephew, we got half a steer. I'm fixing to fix up some chorizo and we're going to have baked beans and collard greens. I'm confident nobody here has ever had that for Thanksgiving, that on sample that doesn't match the group would fool us. My thesis for physician assistant school was instructive in understanding complex sinus infections in teens and adults. And my subject being an age 15 male, the information was useless for infants and young toddlers because they don't even have sinuses. In my review of the public comments of the past city council meetings, the majority of speakers are opposed to 119A through C. I can tell you right now, speaking in meetings can be intimidating, so it's possible those who have done so are not a representative sample of the group. But emails, calls, letters to council members are less intimidating. The sample size is bigger, so it's as good as we'll get without an expensive survey. I emailed city council members, the mayor, and asked the library director how many communications they've received regarding the ordinance. How many in favor and how many opposed? And I thank those who responded. Some indicated that no one can honestly answer that question. Others said it's difficult to keep a running tally. Others did keep track of that data. They had documented the request of their constituents and had numbers. Of the reported council member communications, 90% were opposed to ordinance 119. The library has received 87 emails on the topic, 80 opposed, seven in favor. That's 92% opposed to the ordinance. This indicates a huge, huge preference in the community. Which means we can cut the meeting short and go home, which is good because now I'm craving baked beans. So some have claimed it's not fair to only listen to the loudest voices, but this is not about volume. It's about data and there is no other data. That's all we have to try not to fool ourselves. I suspect this debate will culminate in a decision by Mayor Kaminsky. We thank you, Madam Mayor, for following the data and helping us not fool ourselves.
Thank you. All right, next, Lynn Atkins.
Lynn Atkins, resident, and I'm speaking in regard to ordinance 119. So I've appeared multiple times providing what I believe to be fact-based information that might sway the four council members that have pushed this rewrite forward. At the last meeting, I said, I felt that progress had been made. I thought that we had moved forward with a commitment to not ban books. I was wrong. I was so caught up in the dialogue that I missed a very key point. The city council or mayor will not initiate a book ban. The key operative in that phrase is initiate. Section two, item F of the proposed rewrite is. Individually approve or reject all current Liberty Lake Public Library policies retroactive to each of the latest adopted versions currently in place as of February 21, 2023. Along with any new or revised policies from this state forward. Wow. I believe the writing of that section to be flawed, confusing and open to interpretation. That retroactive piece is a game changer. Reverting to old library policy puts the book challenge process back to the city council. Remember, the wording is that you would not initiate a ban. So these two pieces combined give the city council the authority to ban books. I have appealed to you on the basis that this is a violation of our citizens' First Amendment rights. Either you don't understand, you don't agree, or it is inconvenient to your viewpoint. I have appealed on the basis of the library board being a governing board versus an advisory board. And that the Attorney General's office says you cannot reduce their authority and that the Secretary of State's page indicates. That a governing board does not need to submit policy for approval. I have appealed on the basis that the library board and the director are the subject matter experts and you should defer to them. So where does this leave us? Instead of having written an improved version of the ordinance, your rewrite reinstates your ability to ban books. Do not do this. Stand up for the First Amendment and our intellectual freedom. This rewrite is flawed and has our citizens deeply and rightfully concerned. I ask, please do not pass this ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, Kristin Anderson.
Hello, my name is Kristin Anderson and I am a resident of Liberty Lake. This is my second time attending a meeting and. I don't know how much more to say than what Lynn just said. I feel that this is wrong. I feel that this. If you were to pass this, then where is it ever going to stop? What's the next book? What next book is going to happen where it's going to be in a situation where you're going to ban that? I mean, you start banning one, it's going to trickle down to another one and another one. And I think that you really need to start listening to the citizens that live in this town. And telling you that this is wrong. I mean, this is kind of barbaric, I think. I mean, why don't you just plan a big picnic in the park and have a. Burn books. To me, it's no different. You have no right. To say what people can read. It's a person's choice. And I feel having this meeting and having this been going on now for several months. It just shows that it's just so unbalanced and, and then some of you are coming up for reelection. You know, if this is your own personal belief and your own feeling, that's great. Everybody has a choice to their own thoughts and beliefs. But I feel that I should be able to read a book. Because I want to read the book. And if you don't want to read the book and if you don't agree with it, well, that's fine. Everybody has their own opinion. But I think when you start taking the initiative of. Of, you know, taking books away, it's not going to stop. You're going to have someone come and complain about another book. They feel that shouldn't be on the shelf. And then what reasons for that? Because of their own personal feelings and beliefs? Well, that's great, but others. Don't have to have that. It's the First Amendment right. It's freedom of speech. And that's what's been going on for many years now. And there's many times where there's been books banned and burnt. And, you know, it's just hatred. It doesn't show respect. It doesn't show that this town is united. It shows divided. And I feel that if you make this decision and if you make this decision where books are going to start being banded. It's not going to stop. It's going to repeat and there's never going to be end to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Natalie Govan.
Hi, Liberty Lake, longtime citizen, 20 years. I founded the Liberty Lake Rotating Art Program. Founded it. The Liberty Lake Art Display Terms and Conditions, number, section three, number two. The city reserves the right to delete from consideration. I'll leave out the middle part. Blabity, blah, blah, blah. Discrimination of sexual orientation images and works advocating a political campaign or containing pornography.
Okay, I'm not, I'm going to ask you not to raise that because you take away our right not to see that. Put it away, please. Please put it away. You're violating our rights right now to not choose to see that. Darren.
Okay, so that's number one. When I went to the Liberty Lake Library and looked up Hustler Magazine, for example, couldn't find it. Zero. When I went to the Liberty Lake Library and looked up Playboy. Nothing. Zero. When I went to the Liberty Lake Library and looked up porn. As a subject by itself. Pornland, how porn has hijacked our sexuality. Good pictures, bad pictures, porn-proofing today's young kids. The porn myth exposing the reality behind the fantasy of pornography. The trouble with men, reflections on sex, love, marriage, porn and power. Boys and sex, young men on hookups, love porn consent. And navigating the new masculinity. He's a porn addict. Now what? I could go on. I've got more screenshots. What the library did spend our tax money on. Are informational books that talk about how detrimental pornographic images that people don't want to see, that's it. That don't want to see.
You're done. You've disrupted the meeting. You've taken away people's right to choose whether or not they see that, which is exactly what everybody is speaking on tonight.
It won children's book awards.
We will dismiss them.
It won children's book awards. I've got the screenshots. Do your research. You want data?
That's it. I'm not trying to shut people's free speech down here, everybody, but if, again, that just took everybody's right away, whether you want to see it or not. And that's the core of what we're talking about tonight. Okay, next, Brad Hamblit.
Oh, what? What a display for me to follow being the board president or chair.
You put it on, put the time on pause, Todd, please. Go ahead, Brad.
I have, yeah. Having been in on that from the very beginning. Which, I'll just say right off the top, is why the Liberty Lake Board of Library trustees chose to relook at. Our policy for book challenges and take the politicization that you just saw out of books. In front of everyone here tonight. Not necessary, not appropriate, not needed. I'll leave it at that and get on to what I really wanted to say. You will see later today in the meeting or tonight in the meeting, a presentation by the Board of Library Trustees and our library director. Our annual report. In that report, you will find out just how valuable our library is to our city, our citizens, our youth, the programming. It is a fantastic resource. I've stood up here before. I've said that many times. A fantastic resource for our citizens and the children in our citizens. And they are continually, our Board of Library Trustees, working to collaborate with the youth in our community. And with the adults in our community to establish programming to meet their needs. It's a fantastic resource. I'm going to run out of time. I'm not going to talk about letters because Travis already did that. There's been some confusion or things said about, well, we really don't.
What's this guy's name again?
Pardon me?
Can we turn off whoever microphone that is?
Pardon me?
Go ahead, it was.
I'm losing time here, mayor.
Go ahead, we'll give you an extra 10.
So the, the letters, he already gave the stats for that, but I went through some letters that have been given to the library board trustees, 70 letters, four against. That's an overwhelming, that's, that's a number. That's not just coming up here and say, oh, well, there's a lot of people that are, are for the, the ordinance staying the way it was written. So consider that. I'm really concerned about the wording that. Councilman Spencer has in there about the authority to revise, revoke. Library Board of Policy. And what that does allow the council to do is say to the board, go back, rewrite this. We don't like what you have. Rewrite it the way we want it to be. And that can lead to censorship. It can lead to reducing access of material for all age levels in our library. Critical for anybody in our community. Trustees in the beginning had it right, or not trustees, the council had it right. If you go to the, the ordinance and you go to G under the powers and duties of the trustees, can I have just 30 seconds?
I gave you, no, I gave you an extra 10 because we reset the clock and then I gave you an extra 10 after the second disruption. Sorry. All right, Kim Gerard. Okay. Kim Schmidt.
Hello, Kim Schmidt, resident of Liberty Lake. I just wanted to once again state that I know. People are saying this isn't about banning books. My face may have only been visible in the City Hall building for a couple of months, but I promise you, I have been paying attention for much longer than that. It very much looks like this is about banning books. Everybody has already said everything that, you know, can be said about that, you know, violation of First Amendment rights, yada, yada, yada. By the way, nobody called you any names two weeks ago. Maybe. Maybe you felt a kinship to the name, you know, a word that was used. I don't know. Maybe that's your own thing. Maybe we're all missing our kids' activities and such. However. This stays on the agenda and we're going to keep showing up as long as it's on the agenda. Please just drop this. It's a horrible, horrible idea. Our library is capable. Of handling which books should be banned and which books should not be banned. They are fully capable of doing so. On that note, mayor, please veto if this passes. It sounds, you've said many things. That lead me to believe that could be the case, but I ask that you have some integrity on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Linda Ball.
Good evening. Once again, I'm speaking on proposed ordinance 119c. We shouldn't even be here again discussing something that has been beat to death. Especially given the testimony expressed here over the past several meetings. Everything that has been said to the four who insist on continuing with this discussion has fallen on deaf ears. I find that very sad and tragic. As a friend of mine said, it's time to put 119c out of its misery. These are her words, but it's, it's good, all of the word smithing and tweaking doesn't change the intent. At the last meeting, you didn't vote because several of you expressed confusion as to what we're voting for, after all the alphabet soup you've created. So, the task to sort it out was left up to the city attorney. Poor guy. As my friend said, you are just putting lipstick on a pig. You can add lipstick, a tutu, a ballerina slipper, and even a wig, but it's not a ballerina, it's a pig, you're not fooling us. The constant gaslighting is frustrating and we see right through you. This is about freedom and the First Amendment rights, our First Amendment rights. We all have the right to think and feel as we want, we all have different stories and different life experiences. I'm quite certain that we all want to grow and learn every day of our lives. If we can't have access to a broad array of information which the library affords, how do we learn? At the last meeting, someone brought up the burning of books, and that was brought up tonight, too. But in the last meeting, someone brought it up in talking about the Third Right when they burned books. You might think that's an outrageous comparison to what the intent of changing this ordinance is all about, but you're wrong. Remember when they burned Beatles albums in the Bible Belt in the 60s? How ridiculous. As I've said before, and I have said this before here, this is a slippery slope to the eradication of public schools and who knows what other freedoms we enjoy as United States citizens. Liberty Lake's getting a lot of bad press over this, is this how we want to be portrayed? Mayor Chris, you have the power to veto this nonsense, and nonsense it is when it comes to the final vote. So, do it, put this pig to rest.
Thank you. Okay, we've got two more in person, and I know we've got at least one person online, so just another reminder to those online, if we want, okay. If you want to make a comment, please send a note to Todd Henderson in the chat feature, we have Ava, am I saying it right, Shakar? Shakar, okay, sorry about that. With a name like Kaminsky, I'm used to the mispronunciation, Stu.
Hi, my name is Ava Shakar, I'm 13 years old and I live in Liberty Lake. I'm here to, here today to show my train of thought on what's happening in the libraries. I support the council majority for moving forward with the proposed changes. I'd like to talk about the younger, kids younger than me, younger than me that can walk straight into a library and read pornography and see it. This is horrendously disgusting, I would never want to walk into a library as a child and see that stuff when I shouldn't even have a clue on what it is. When I was younger, I read books with smoking in it and I thought that was bad. Nowadays, we need to protect these children's eyes and hearts and minds from this crap. My fam, family and friends also agree with me. Also, instead of listening to all the citizens, which we should, you guys should also listen to the kids as well. Kids don't know when they're open, when they're going to a library and opening up a book that they're going to see all this pornography. We aren't banning books, we don't want the books in our libraries for our children to see again, if you, once again, if you want the book, just go online, I used to love the library now, but no, I'm not going to go back there from what's going on right now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, Erin Sisada.
Not the tough one to follow, I'm Erin, I live in 99019. I didn't really prepare remarks, I, again, didn't plan on speaking. I think what this whole issue has showed us is that one side is much more organized than the other, and I give you props for that. It's, it's amazing what you can call out as far as getting people to organize and come out and stand up and speak on behalf of your cause, I think that is pretty tremendous, and I've seen it over the months. I brought this issue up, it wasn't an LGBTQ issue, it was an issue of seeing pornography in a book geared towards children. That's what it was about, it wasn't about anything other than that, if it was a heterosexual couple doing the same crap, I would have been raising hell as well. So, for whoever to turn it into an LGBT issue, fine, do it, but that's not what this was started for. I fully support the majority on the council for moving forward with approving the language. Under RCW 35, you have full right to do this, you should do it. We are, you as a council, you're not under RCW 27's requirements to let the board have their own jurisdiction. It's, it's taxpayer money, you guys were in your, you're in your positions elected by the people. The, the majority of the council shows who voted in the majority. So, I ask you to move forward with approving it, may I ask you to not veto it? And thank you for standing up and doing what's right.
Thank you. All right, I think we've got one more in person, then we'll go to online, Christine Holbert.
Thank you, I'm Christine Holbert, I do live in Liberty Lake. I'm the founding director of Lost Horse Press, which is an independent literary press that publishes poetry books that are used. Well, they're all over the world, they're used mostly for university classes. And I'm also the founder of Spokane's Get Lit Festival. And I heard about this ordinance a little bit late, but I was appalled. This is exactly how things started in Nazi Germany, with a book, book bans and book burnings, and then progressed. And during the 2122 school year, parent-led groups coordinated to advance book censorship. These groups pressured districts to remove books without following their own policies, even in some cases, removing books without reading them. This trend has continued in the 2223 school year, but it has also been supercharged by a new source of pressure, legislation. So, I just want to remind that book bans can impede the freedom to read, they limit students' access to a diversity of views and stories. School libraries serve the educational process by making knowledge and ideas available and ensuring books remain available for all, regardless of personal or political ideologies and ideas. Policymakers, school boards, and district administrators should consider the many reasons for including and celebrating books rather than restricting them. Thank you.
Thank you. Great, and I've got at least one online, Max Parker.
Hi, can y'all hear me?
We can, thanks for joining us.
Okay. Hi, how's it going, I'm Max, I am 18, and I wanted to show my support for the bill. It has been my experience that, to put it blatantly, pornography is widely available in schools, just in book form. And especially with the book Gender Queer that people were talking about, that is like a big example, but it is much more widespread than that. To Ava, the young girl who spoke earlier, you're super brave, I've been seeing the same stuff as you, I'm glad that you came out. Sorry, I'm like trying to prepare my notes here. Um, yeah, so to everybody saying that it's book banning or censorship, we're not just, we're not trying to ban books that, look, we're not trying to ban To Kill a Mockingbird, right, we're banning pornography. Just like we wouldn't fight to have Pornhub enabled on the school computers, we're not going to let these books in the library. I don't want Fifty Shades in the library, just the same as I don't want the Gender Queer books in the library. At, oh, whoops, sorry, my, my headphones weren't going, that was so upset I had pulled up. And to people making it a gay, straight thing, it's not, like I said, I don't want straight porn in the library, just like I don't want gay porn in the library. It just happens that a lot of it is coming from one side, so it seems more prominent, but I'll be real, I don't want any porn in the library, that should not be a controversial take, I shouldn't be compared to a Nazi. First off, whoever said that, like, let's not call the opponents Nazis, that's a little bit tried. I don't think Nazis were banning porn, they were banning actual books that showed dissent. All right, nobody wants to ban these books either, we want them removed from children's libraries, school libraries, children's areas. All right, I'll be real, I don't even live in Washington. I live in California, dog. So, yeah, take that with a, a pretty sizable grain of salt, but, uh, yeah, I would like to show my support for the bill and for the, for the council, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have one, at least one more online, a third we are trying to confirm, I'd like to welcome former council member Jamie Baird.
Good evening, council, I join you, yeah, I'm joining you from North Carolina, it's almost 11:00 PM my time, but this was too big for me to ignore. Almost a year ago, I, as my final act on the council, voted to uphold the Board of Trustees' decision to not remove Gender Queer. I did that despite finding the book reprehensible, because I support the First Amendment. However, using the term "book ban" in First Amendment to describe this ordinance is a red herring, and I have been following this closely over the last year, and I am appalled at how it has divided our city. But I should be surprised, because George Orwell warned us of this back in his book 1984, "And if all others accepted the lie which the party imposed, of all records told the same tale, then the lie passed into history and became truth." And that's what's happened, this bill, or excuse me, this ordinance is not about banning books, a careful read of that puts that issue to bed, but it gains attention to call it a book ban, and that's what's happened. The vocal majority has thrown the red herring out. So, let's talk about what this really is and jog your memory back. When council supported the trustees' decision to not remove the book, the trustees then removed the language to, in their bylaws, to have council have the final decision over what remains in the collection. And that prompted council to now come back with this ordinance, once again placing the library under the jurisdiction of elected officials. At the end of the day, the issue is simple. Is an unelected Board of Trustees accountable or not? And if so, who are they accountable to? The debate has been, are they advisory or governing? Well, a simple read of the Washington State Library recommendations for Board of Trustees clearly delineates what's governing and what's advisory. And hate to tell the Board of Trustees this, y'all are advisory. So, at the end of the day, you need to be held accountable to council. Now, I think you guys need to come back to the table in good faith, council and trustees, you guys are talking past each other. And I, I wished I was there to help foster that conversation, but I'm not. But you guys need to sit down in good faith, leave the name-calling aside, stop trying to judge each other's intentions, judge each other's real words, and decide how to move forward. You can do it, but you're going to have to work together. And again, not about book banning, it's about accountability.
Thanks for joining us, now get a good night's sleep. All right, we have one more online, DG Garcia.
Thank you, mayor, council members, and honorable citizens coming this evening. There are, and I'm glad to see Jamie, because she did state something profound when she was here in regards to banning books. And this did start off with banning books. And in the end, two years from now, if the ordinance has changed, it'll be dead on the table of banning books. We know that, because when you look at the nonverbals of some of the members, you actually see the disdain of the conversation. It's not the community that's having a hard time coming together to talk to their leaders, it's the leaders having a hard time talking to each other. And it's other leaders that want to take complete control of the voices and the minds in this city. They know who they are, we know who they are. The unfortunate thing is that the Board of Trustees did have the ultimate say in the policy. But Jamie's alluding to the conversation that should have been had by the council, not in a meeting, maybe in a workshop, that said, "But we have the ultimate say on the ordinance." So, regardless of what policies you put forward, whether it's the Planning Commission, Parks and Arts, the council is the ultimate say. I'm against banning books, because it's like banning people. And I'm one of those people who was banned over 400 years ago plus. And if it weren't for good people standing up all over the nation, I might not have this opportunity that I have now. It is about banning books. We can convince ourselves that it isn't in order to feel good about passing the ordinance, but it is about banning books, we must be honest, honesty is the only policy. It must always be the only policy. This government allowed a member of your leadership to pose as a city mayor when he was not, and he got a mere slap on the wrist. It allowed a person who had used the city logo to the tune of 14,500 to get a slap on the wrist. All of these things were advised by the city attorney that they were okay. What really needs to happen, once all this is done, the citizens should continue to push forward. But the leadership here needs to look inside itself and decide what kind of leaders you're going to be. You're going to always do the right thing? Or you're going to continue to have the conversation to see what is the middle ground that can make it work better? I'm sorry that we're at this place, but this is the first step to the next step, which has to be better. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. And we have, we do have a person online with her hand up, it says iPhone 2. If that person could let Todd Henderson know in the chat her name, so I could call on you. Let it go, apparently that person disappeared. Okay, all right, so just a refresher, at the second read of the ordinance, there will be opportunity for comment, if possible, hopefully not repeats, but, but reflection on maybe what the council discussion was. So, we're going to go ahead.
May I ask this?
Yes.
Could I acknowledge written public comments as well?
Always forget you, Kelsey, I'm so sorry.
All right.
I don't mean to.
It's okay, so we received written public comment from the following people, which were all shared with the mayor and council. Gerald D Bishop, Sandra B Bishop, Nancy James, Lori Romaine, Sue Hagner, Lorraine Tuna, Sandy Marges, Lisa Salazar, Hugh Severs, Pamela A Oberg, Melissa Pitt, Daniel Holbert, Taylor Holbert, Sue Sawyer, Josie Moore, and Christine Holbert.
Thank you. All right, now we'll go on to announcements, proclamations, and special presentations, first up, we have Family Promise. Welcome.
All right, well, thank you for having me, I, I can definitely say this is the first time where I'm the second most controversial issue on the topic and not the first. It's the first time it's happened to me, I'm going to be talking about homelessness today, and about Family Promise, this is, was scheduled months ago, and so it just happened to coincide today. So, but I'm glad there's passionate people in the room, because this is a passionate topic. And so, when most people think of homelessness, they have a picture in their mind of what homelessness looks like. And so, I just want everybody here to imagine somebody that's homeless in your mind. Create that picture, what do they look like, where are they? How old are they, what is that, what comes to mind? And for the vast majority in this room, because I've done this hundreds of times, I can tell you that the picture looks like this, if you'll advance the slide for me. Right, you see that, that person's sitting on the street corner, usually a man, or a soup line, something like that. What the picture often does not look like is this, with this, which is the next slide. Now, who imagined kids? All of these children in this picture have been homeless in the past two years in our community. So, that is what we work on here at Family Promise, is we work with families with children who are experiencing homelessness. And it's a pretty big issue that goes under the radar, so if you'll advance the slide to the next one. One in 25 students in Spokane County every year experiences homelessness. For your school district, Central Valley, it's so far this year, 430 homeless students. And because it's not safe to have your kids on the street, because Um, and because it's not safe to have your kids on the street, because it's not safe to, uh, have them downtown, you don't see them. They're couch surfing. They are sleeping in cars. They are moving from place to place. And because of that, they're out of sight, so they're out of mind, which is why family homelessness is called the hidden homeless around the country. Uh, but it is a big issue. It's a big issue here. And actually, those numbers were pre-COVID. Uh, it's actually higher now coming out of the pandemic. So go ahead and advance to the next slide. Uh, this is really a big deal because, uh, children, the effects of homelessness on kids is really severe. They're three times more likely to drop out of school. They are four times more likely to, uh, be addicted to a controlled substance. They are seven times more likely to attempt suicide than a child who hasn't experienced homelessness. Go ahead and advance. So at Family Promise, we work to equip families and communities to end the cycle of homelessness. And, uh, I'd like to show a little bit right now, just with a quick presentation of how somebody becomes homeless, because I get asked that question all the time, and then talk about what is the most common denominators, because once you identify those, then you start to identify some solutions. And so let's say, and this is participation, so, uh, council, you can participate in this. Uh, let's say you're in middle class. You go out in the morning to get in your car to go to work. You put the key in the ignition. You turn the key and nothing happens. What do you do? Who do you call?
Triple A.
You call your husband.
Triple A.
You call triple A. Let's say you call triple A, right? Uh, because you, you paid for that insurance. They come and they check your car. They can't figure it out. They tell you to a repair shop. Uh, you have a credit card because you have access to credit. You put that down for the repair. The repair place calls that company that rents you cars that comes and picks you up. And so they come and pick you up. And you get a rental car, and it's a big hassle for like three hours. Uh, and then you're on your way with your life. So let's do the same scenario, but now you are in generational poverty. Uh, you walk out at your, out to your car in the morning, if you have a car. Let's say you do have a car. You put the key in the ignition. You turn the key. Nothing happens. In generational poverty, do you have access to triple A? No. So who do you call?
Uncle Bob.
Say they get.
Uncle Bob.
Uncle Bob, yeah, Uncle Bob. You call somebody you know that knows something about car, about cars. So in middle class, you call triple A, and in poverty, you call Uncle Ray, right? And so he comes and he picks you up and he says, you know, I don't know what's wrong with your car. I'll see if I can fix it this weekend. And so, uh, now you've got a transportation problem, but he gives you a ride to work that day. So now I have a transportation problem. I'm just gonna speak up. Hopefully they can hear me on the, on the, online.
Well, real quick, Kelsey won't pick up on the recording.
There we go, guys.
Perfect.
Okay, so you hold the string also. So you have a transportation problem. Now, that means that you're getting rides to work while you're at work. You're trying to figure out how to pick your kids up from school and where you're gonna go next and how you're gonna get to the store. And do you have the type of job that you can show up late at? Or be distracted at? No. So what happens to your job? You guys know the answer. You lose your job, right? Uh, and, and you typically, I'm getting all tangled up already. This is great.
I've seen this.
Yeah, so you, so you lose your job. So your transportation problem becomes a job problem. Sorry, there you go. Tom, you got it?
I got it.
Transportation problem becomes a job problem. And now when you don't have a job, what do you not have money for?
Food, rent.
Food and rent, right? So your transportation problem becomes a job problem, now becomes a housing problem. And although you lose housing at this spot, you are not homeless. You've lost housing, but you're not homeless. So where do you go and stay when you don't have housing anymore?
Friends.
Friends, yeah, friends, relatives. You said it over here, council. So, um, you go and you stay with friends or relatives. Now, how many of you guys have had friends or relatives stay for an extended period of time at your house? How often does that go well? Not very often. So what happens is you had a transportation problem that became a job problem, becomes a housing problem. Now it becomes a relationship problem, and this is when homeless happens. You've got nobody else you can lean on, so you end up on the streets, whether that's because of bad things that you've done, bad things that have been done to you, or just circumstance. You end up without any connections that you can lean on. And so what happens from there is we start seeing these types of issues, which this says healthcare. So you start getting sick because you're stressed, stressed all the time, right? And the body keeps the score on stress. And so you start getting sick. And so if you can get access to medical care, you might take it, or you might fall into this, which not everybody that's homeless has this issue. This has substance abuse on it for, for the audience here. Um, or you might participate in this, and this says crime. Um, all of these things are interrelated factors, but you can enter this string at any point and end up with all of these things happening because of your lack of resources. And so, um, how many in, in the room raise your hand? It's just a little uncomfortable with this string crossing over the room right now. A little, my type A people, come on, you can admit it. It's okay. Um, this is the state that our folks that are in generational poverty, that are in homelessness, are living in constantly. There's this constant state of things falling apart and things just not working out. And so go ahead and you can put the signs down. Let's hear for our council members for holding the signs and the screen. Um, so I want to advance to the next slide and we'll, we'll continue this presentation. We'll wrap up before very long at all. Um, so here at Family Promise, we work to try to prevent as many families from becoming homeless as possible in Spokane County. We were the first agency to provide rental assistance seven years ago, so well before the pandemic. We also do diversion work and work with landlords to keep families in their housing and not being evicted. Um, last year, we helped over two thousand, uh, folks stay in their housing with that program. Uh, but for those that do become evicted, uh, or lose their housing, we have shelter options for them. Yes, Tom.
Joe, before you move on, can you describe the difference in the cost of keeping somebody in housing?
Sure. Yes, the, the cost of homelessness is very expensive. Um, so I'll just tell you the shelter cost for somebody who's experiencing homelessness uh, at, at our shelters, which is the lowest in the county, is four thousand two hundred dollars per person. Um, and that's the lowest. Uh, the shelter, the cost to the community of a homeless person is right around, it varies between twenty-seven and forty-two thousand dollars a year when you talk about, uh, services, police, fire, emergency room, uh, case managers. And so that's super expensive. The cost to prevent, uh, prior to COVID, it was three hundred and forty dollars on average. Uh, it went up to, on average, right around five thousand dollars, a little bit above five thousand dollars during COVID. Uh, and now is coming back down again. Um, that's for the whole family, though, not just one individual. And so it's much more cost-effective, just like everything else, to prevent than it is to intervene. Um, we have multiple different shelters. We have the, the largest emergency family. We have the only emergency family shelter, uh, which is on Mission and Napa in Spokane. Anybody in the county that becomes homeless with a child can walk in there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and receive services. But the next area there is these neighborhood sites, which is a really important innovation that has happened in the past couple of years. And what that is, is these are smaller sites that usually exist out of homes in communities. Uh, that was an outgrowth of COVID. It was an accident. We had to turn our administrative office into another shelter site. We were in the South Perry District, um, in Spokane. Uh, and we saw this amazing thing happen at that site. First of all, we've, we've had no complaints in three years. But we had a ninety-five percent exit to permanent housing rate out of that smaller site location. To put that into perspective, the average emergency shelter exit in Spokane County is thirteen percent. So dramatic difference on actually ending homelessness with that. And so we are expanding more of these sites. We will have one, uh, actually in Spokane Valley later this year. Um, they fit into a neighborhood. You don't have the nimbyism issue. And actually, the neighbors around each of our sites, if, if they know it's a shelter, uh, they usually are surprised when they find out, and then they want to volunteer and help. And so we have not had any issues with those smaller sites. And I think with these smaller communities, that's the direction that, that should be looked at, rather than the mass shelters. These smaller sites, three to four families at a time, uh, much more close attention and better outcomes. And then the last area there is we prepare families for a stable future. So since twenty-twenty, ninety-five percent of our households that have got into housing have retained their housing. Uh, we stay with them for two years after they get into housing, uh, and help them retain that. So does it work, right? Does it work? That's the question. If you could, uh, move forward to the next slide. Last year, of all the shelters in Spokane County, we rehoused forty-nine point nine percent of those that were rehoused. So basically, half of all ha- of all homeless that were rehoused last year were housed through Family Promise. And then all of the other shelters combined make up the other half. Uh, so it does work, uh, what, what we're doing, and we're getting even better at that. We're averaging fifty-seven percent right now uh, for the first part of this year. Go ahead in the next slide. This is just another visual of that, showing all the shelters and showing the outcomes. Uh, that blue line at the top is Family Promise. This is hard to see, but, uh, you can see that there. Uh, go ahead and next slide. So the one common denominator in all of homelessness is not just a lack of housing, it's a loss of community. Um, people that are homeless don't need just housing. You need to rebuild networks of relationships and rebuild connections, and that's where the community comes in. Uh, we want to wrap people around our families with children that are already in this community. Um, actually, Green Acres Elementary is the highest homeless student count of any school in, uh, Central Valley School District. And that's not too far from here. Um, so we want to wrap families around them. We want to wrap people around them so that when a bump in the road happens, people don't become homeless again. They stay stable because they have a network of relationships to support them. Go to the next slide there. Uh, if anybody'd like to get involved or find out more, we are expanding into more county areas this year. Spokane Valley is the big emphasis this year, and then we're looking up north for some other sites. But, uh, this is a way to get involved, and you can scan that code, and it'll take you to our website. Or if you'd like to donate, it'll do that, too. Uh, any questions?
Questions from the council?
Jen. Yeah, I know when we spoke at that, uh, Spokane Valley, um, open house regarding homelessness, and I, I know when we talked, um, you mentioned the fact that, you know, if you can, if you can nip this in the bud while they're young, um, that, that they're not likely to be homeless as adults. Um, a- and maybe this isn't the, the best question for you, but, um, for those who are experiencing homelessness as adults with no children, um, what's the best way to tackle that?
There's a lot of agencies that are working on this, and there's, there's good agencies out there that are really actively trying to find solutions for adults, single adults. Um, and there's a lot of outreach teams, too. So your community can contact the outreach teams. They will come out and go to encampments. They will work with folks. They're trained to do that, uh, and to get resources to, to folks, um, within the community. Uh, this is a controversial topic, uh, in every community. It's not just, it's not just here in Washington. It's every community in the country is dealing with homelessness right now. Um, but this is, uh, there's lots of groups that are willing to work, uh, with those. If it is a, if it involves somebody who's pregnant or who has a child, that's us. Um, yep.
Any else? Now, thank you for coming. I'm familiar with your organization through Craig Howard, of course, and I know you guys are doing great things, so appreciate you.
Thank you so much. Thank you guys for letting me interrupt your other important topic, so.
Thanks. All right. Okay, next, I'd like to welcome Phil Champlin from the Hub Sports Center. He's going to give us an update on their project. And I know she's gonna not like me for doing this, but I would like to also to welcome Commissioner Mary Cooney, who represents our district here, um, for attending our meeting tonight. You're welcome. She's like, darn it, I was trying to be incognito.
All right. Thank you very much, and, uh, appreciate Joe and all the stuff they do at Family Promise. That's, that's just really good stuff. So, uh, again, my name is Phil Champlin. I'm the executive director for the Hub Sports Center. Uh, we're a five oh one C three nonprofit here in Liberty Lake, and our purpose is to provide events that have a positive impact on youth and community. And, uh, I came and shared with you a little bit about our vision, um, in early January, and just wanted to, to come back and give you, uh, uh, an update on it. Again, the big vision is to put together four synthetic turf fields with lights, um, that we could use for, uh, for more play and opportunities for our kids. And, uh, we had two feasibility studies that were wrapping up, um, uh, in that timeframe. And so the results from those, um, if you want to go to the next slide. So the first group was a market research analysis. And so this is through, um, Convention Sports and Leisure, CSL. And they, they looked at competitive, um, like facilities in our area. And so it's a little hard to see, but the star is Spokane. Number eleven there is Dwight Merkel. They've got two, um, synthetic turf fields there. The next closest complex that actually has synthetic turf is in Yakima, um, with four synthetic turf fields in Yakima, and then the rest of them are on the west side. Um, that number eight there is a, a field complex in Pasco, uh, which is all natural grass. So, um, you can see there's a lot of real estate around Spokane that does not have these types of facilities. And, and we're really under-resourced as a community for that. Uh, if you go to the next slide, they had some great, uh, numbers as part of the market analysis. One is that our community is ready for this type of facility and could support it in terms of activities. So you can see the top left is fifty-two hundred activities going on in a year. Hundred and thirty-seven thousand kids and families would come through there. Uh, the top two numbers there is, is showing that if we're, we're operating without desk service, uh, we'd be able to operate at a profitable level. Um, so this wouldn't be something that we need to continually sustain or fundraise for, um, once it's up and operating. Uh, forty-six hundred room nights, so five point three million dollars in economic impact from direct and indirect spending from people that come and have activities there. A, a lot of that's due to, to tournament-type events. Uh, but like we do with our indoor space, we balance those, uh, regional outside events along with events and activities for our local community. The one number I, I was really interested in was the two point two million at the bottom. They have an algorithm that calculates personal income. So having activities at this new facility would generate, they're guessing around sixty-seven jobs that those jobs result in two point two million dollars in personal income. So down the street from the hub is Wendy's. And so the example would be Wendy's has to hire another three to four staff people to work there year-round because of the activity level that we're generating at our facility. So, so not only are we creating economic impact for the general community, but we're also creating, uh, real sustainable jobs that will last. So the other study that, that we did was with the focus group. Um, and, uh, they had, uh, information on our, uh, fundraising capabilities. And so they asked to interview people that had given to the hub before and then come up with kind of their, um, algorithm number of, of how much money they thought we could generate from current donors. And so that number came out to be about three point five million dollars. Uh, and we go to the next slide. So three point five million dollars, um, from, um, individuals, businesses, and foundations. Um, we've already been able to secure, uh, just under a million dollars from Spokane County. Um, thank you, Commissioner Cooney, um, through one of their ARP buckets. Uh, Governor Ensley signed today the capital budget, which we have a million dollars in the capital budget. Um, and we appreciate our, our fourth district legislators, representatives, and senators that, that helped with that. Uh, and there's a youth athletic facility, um, grant as part of that as well through the Recreation Conservation Office. And so between what the focus group feels like we can raise, uh, on our own through our, our existing constituent base, plus that, um, puts us around six million, a little over six million. And so, um, we decided what would be best for us would be to, uh, probably phase our project in. And so really, um, I'm gonna go back. If I could edit my slide, uh, phase one was actually the land acquisition. So we've already got a donation for three million dollars. Sorry, keep on that slide. I was, if I could, if I could edit it, which I can't now. Uh, I would say that the land acquisition was actually phase one. So we've secured seventeen and a half acres right next to the hub. Phase two, A and B are going to be to do general site work. Um, we've got some overfill on that land. And then to add two synthetic turf fields as part of that, phase two, and then phase three would be the, the next part of that. So now we can advance that slide. So the phase one, just oriented with the fields on the south and the fields to the north. So our, our phase one would be the two south fields. That's what makes the most sense for us, um, initially. So, um, artificial turf with lights, um, hundred sixty parking spaces, and then a, a So um artificial turf with lights, um hundred sixty parking spaces and then a a building that would have restroom, storage, uh, maintenance shop. And then the next phase would be the two um facility, the two fields to the north. Um, both would have a walking pathway, inclusive playground um and seating area. And so our our goal right now is to keep on this timeline, which would be to um start moving dirt this summer and then start construction um next spring. I think actually the next slide, if we'd advanced that would be the timeline. And this is pretty similar to to what I shared when I was here back in January. So we've acquired the acreage, we've done the studies. Um, we're in the quiet phase of the capital campaign right now, which means we're we're out talking to our our existing base. The the piece that the focus group wasn't able to factor in is the the base that's outside our normal base. So we we have people that that invest in the hub because of the programs and outreach that we do for kids, but but it's all indoor space. And so with this, now we're expanding our capacity to serve into that outdoor space. And so it really widens that that group of people that would be interested in in supporting what we do um to give us um an opportunity to to almost double the impact that we have with our current building now. Um, so our goals are up there to uh to do the earthwork here this summer. Um, do a public phase of the capital campaign uh later this fall. Um, start building in March of two thousand and twenty-four. Our goal is to have those two fields up and playable by September one of twenty-four. Uh, my design team has looked at me like I'm crazy, but they haven't told me I'm crazy yet. So we're gonna keep going on that because if you aim at nothing, you'll hit it every time. Um, and so we've got a goal to have two fields ready for kids to be playing on um by that time. And why is a project like this important to our community? Well, like I said, the hub as an organization, our purpose is to provide events that have a positive impact on youth and community. What this does is expands our capacity to serve. And the numbers that that Joe shared about family promise, sports has an effect on that too. It it's not gonna solve poverty or homelessness. Um, but the the research is has similar numbers in the sense that kids that are involved in sports and athletics and activity are more likely to get higher test scores in school. They're less likely to get involved in drugs. They're less likely to have suicidal thoughts. Their positive image, their self-esteem is higher when they're involved in sports. They create that community that Joe was talking about that homeless people are missing. You're part of a team, you're part of a group. You're learning those valuable life skills about how to work together. Um, how to set goals, how to understand that you're not gonna achieve that goal just by by trying it the next day. You're gonna have to work at it and spend time at it. And so um these are all valuable life skills that we can provide for our community here. Right now, we've got a lot of families that when they go to practice, they are leaving Liberty Lake to go to Dwight Merkel is the only location in the winter time that they can practice on artificial turf. Those are the only two public artificial turf fields in the county. They're also going to Plant's Ferry uh in the spring and summertime. But they're they're leaving this area because we don't have anything here that's intentional space for these types of activities. The other thing is is you talk to any family that has kids playing in a sport and they'll tell you for tournaments, for for outdoor tournaments and soccer, lacrosse, football, rugby, they're going to Boise. They're going to Portland, they're going to Seattle and they're spending money there. And I'm sure there's a lot of us that would rather stay here and have a tournament here instead of having to every weekend be on that car trip um heading out to other communities. So we'll have a positive uh effect on on being able to keep our kids closer and at home and and not so much travel time as well as the economic benefit of bringing other people into our community um to spend money here at our our hotels and our restaurants and retail. Uh, go ahead and go to the the next slide. The the programming that we're looking at doing again is is gonna be a balance. Right now at the hub uh courts, uh, two thirds of what we do is is we partner with other like-minded groups. So YMCA, AAU, club volleyball, um, Special Olympics, they come inside to do their events and activities and they can grow or expand their program because we have a space for them to do that. And so we would look at a similar model for the outdoor space. We partner with soccer clubs, lacrosse groups, football, rugby, ultimate frisbee, um T-ball um to to come and have their practices, games, tournaments, camps and clinics there. And then on the outreach side, a third of what we do at the hub is is outreach. And and so uh an example i- is just stuff that we've created ourselves. Um, shameless plug. So May twentieth, this Saturday, we're doing Dad's and Dude's Night. So it's a night for fathers and sons to come hang out and just play together and spend some intentional time together. And so with the opportunity to have more space to program, we can do more types of outreach. So free community sports clinics, uh intermural programs with our middle schools. Um, sport drop-in playdays. How many of you remember on a Saturday just going down to the park and meeting your friends and just playing, right? We can provide those types of opportunities, homeschool PE, pre-K sports days and the like. Next slide. So we reached out to a lot of local groups and and have support from from two of the biggest soccer clubs in our community, from the youth lacrosse community, uh football, rugby, ultimate frisbee, YMCA is interested, uh Spokane Youth Sports Association, Skyhawk Sports, all groups that can come and and expand and provide more opportunities for kids to play and participate. Um, uh organizations, the school districts are are thrilled to have part of this, the sports commission, the chambers. Uh, this is really just a a win-win all the way around. And so part of why I'm here tonight, uh I would love for the council to consider a waiver uh for our permit fees and impact fees um as we go through and and do the permitting process. Uh, I've really enjoyed working with your city staff um and going through this process. I've learned a lot. Um, I'm not a construction. Um, uh, I'm 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 in for for kids and playing games and and providing provide those opportunities. So um they've been very helpful in in uh understanding what those pieces are. But um those permits would be for site improvements and and the CIPA checklist and design review application, um, site grading a- and then construction. The uh, the second request I have for council is is we'd like to submit this project uh as consideration for a a TIF project within the city. Uh, I know that that this area is in that TIF zone. Um, I've had some great conversations with uh Joe Frank at Greenstone and Doug Yost with Centennial Properties. Those are two of the biggest landowners in that TIF zone. Um, and uh they both uh give their their support and blessing to what we're doing here uh in in requesting uh funds from the the TIF program to uh to help with the infrastructure for this. And and you know, the county's a big part of that as well, and that's part of why Mary's here tonight too, is to have the county express their interest and support uh of of this program. Cause really, the you know, the rising tide floats all boats. We're, it's gonna be in the city of Liberty Lake, which is really cool, but it's going to be a draw for our community. The hub already sees people coming over from um Hayden and Post Falls and Coeur d'Alene because there's nothing like it over there. This facility will be similar. There's nothing like it over there and there's nothing like it here in Spokane County either. So we can put ourselves on the map as a community that that really wants to invest in our kids and families through these types of activities. Um, uh, the caveat for us would be with that TIF program, we would want uh a long-term lease with the city uh to to operate and provide the programming for it. Um, if we do move forward with the with the TIF uh part of it, um would be the uh would be the one spot. So um I think the last slide is uh just talking about a kind of our two key points of what we try to do um empowering our youth and inspiring our community. So uh any questions?
Um, before we do take questions, just to re- recap, I know the council had the discussion back in this January um of and pretty much committed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the tourism capital fund. I know there's some challenges with that that we're working on.
Correct.
As to what, if we can use those funds or not, but hopefully um I can't put words in anybody's mouth, but hopefully that the dollar commitment still stands no matter what.
Thank you.
Um, you know, with regards to TIP and lift, you know, that's something I, Lisa, I know you're back there. We we go through that that project list is coming up, right? And so we, the council would need to vote to put that this project on the TIP and lift project list um to be eligible. And then I'm sure Lisa at some point could provide some estimates of impact fees and and permits. So um we we're already working on a lot of that information. So I just want to let you guys know that before I took questions. I saw Councilmember Cargill first.
Thanks, Mayor. I was just gonna ask, uh, Bill, do you have a timeline for when you need that uh those two requests kind of set in stone, ready to go?
The waiver for the the permit and impact fees would be uh sooner. Um, just because we we do wanna try and move dirt this summer because that would put us in a in a good frame to be able to do the construction to to meet that deadline uh September one. So um we've uh we vetted some um contractors uh for that work and and if anybody needs extra topsoil, I have a little bit uh for you. Um, but yes, um, so that would be more urgent of the two requests.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, talk to the school district. Aren't they trying to remediate the gun club? They may need your topstall.
Sure.
Uh, anybody else? Cut Councilmember Dunn.
Um, Phil, I just wanna thank you personally for your leadership in the community. Uh, your your work in the hub is epic and I'm thrilled and excited with the nature of the project and we've got great support here in this council. Um, that, you know, uh, that we're just talking about waiving fees for the actions to be taken to me is something I think we can find very doable. I speak for myself in that gesture, but I think based on the support and the discussion, I think that's a a reasonable request.
Thank you.
With respect to the TIF and lift portion of that, I look forward to understanding more from staff about its impact and the necessary actions. I'm particularly grateful for insight on the timing aspect of that, and I hope that we can actually accommodate the timing.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I think I saw Councilmember Van Ormond.
Yes. Hi.
Hi.
I uh, I too am pretty impressed with everything that's happened from day one from the hub just uh providing so much to the kids. Most of my grandkids, which there's ten of them now, are uh over in Post Falls on the turf. So this is gonna be so much needed. Um, I also sit on the um tourism. And we did have conversations with the local hotel motels. So I'm hoping closely that we work with them because the more we give out, the more we need to put back in for heads and beds. So that means kind of a partnership with the hub, making sure that they're utilizing our local hotels.
Yeah, no, absolutely. In the the graphic, the they showed forty-six hundred room nights over the course of the year. Um, and the the two hotels in Liberty Lake can't accommodate that type of capacity by themselves. Uh, but no, certainly they're they're on our website as as hotels that that people can uh utilize when they come to events and activities at our current facility. So yeah, I only see it uh growing and impacting positively the the two hotels here in Liberty Lake even more.
Well, I think we're gonna keep you pretty busy, at least my ten grandkids.
Great, fantastic.
Two basketball teams right there.
That's right.
All right, anybody else have any questions? All right, thanks as always for being here, Phil.
Yeah, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Phil. Thanks, Phil.
All right, um, and we are on to our Arbor Day proclamation. Before we uh do the read, I just wanna thank um the crew and the staff who put it all together. Um, Councilmember Salberg was was in attendance as well as um several of our residences, but not last, not last but not least, we had where they're probably close to seventy-five kids there from Selkirk Middle School in their science classes, they're seventh graders who walked over to um to help celebrate our Arbor Day and planting of a tulip tree, which I didn't know there was such a thing, but thought it was a maple, but apparently it gets flowers that look like tulips. So looking forward to when that blooms next spring. Uh, but they were able to come, listen to the proclamation, understand a little bit about Arbor Day and how we retain our Tree City designation. Um, and then, of course, the thing that they were looking forward to aside from getting out of class was um helping to shovel the dirt into the holes. So um it was a good, good day. I'm glad they were able to participate. So we will, I'll turn it over to Kelsey to read the proclamation.
Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal.
All right, so before I go, we go on with the proclamation, I'll um entertain a motion from the council to support the proclamation.
So move.
We have a first by Councilmember Cargill. Do we have a second? Second by Councilmember Van Ormond. Uh, any questions or discussions? Right now, oh, in discussions.
Uh, two thousand and three is when we started the Tree City USA. And your first tree is out here inside of the parking lot.
Nice.
Yeah, so we need to go ahead and put a little.
We need to put a plaque on it. That's right.
Yeah.
We'll 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 take that note. That shouldn't cost too much. All right, so all in favor of supporting the proclamation, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion passes seven zero. Now therefore, I Chris Kaminski, mayor of the city of Liberty Lake, do hereby proclaim May fifteenth, yesterday, two thousand and twenty-three as Arbor Day in the city of Liberty Lake. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. All righty, that's signed real quick. All righty, proclamation sign, we'll get that. Get, and if you guys need me to sign the second one for um our partner in this, I can do that. Okay, uh, we are on to reports and inquiries. So we'll start with city council. Any city council reports? Oh, go ahead, Councilmember Salberg.
Well, I've got five things, but I'm gonna let some of the others do it. Uh, you mentioned the Arctic plan. Uh, the one that I would really like to uh mention most.
Can you move your mic over? I'm sorry.
Asian Pacific, I'm sorry, uh, American Heritage Day. Um, and I saw some of the people that are in here that were at that with our Serpini family and uh Indian dance and food that was amazing. And that was at uh Center Place. Um, just a reminder, and I think somebody else is here. Um, June tenth is the Winter Glow uh second ever golf tournament. Uh, Mark Sabe is here. He has applications. I have applications and sponsor things for anybody. And if nobody else is gonna say anything, there's three other things, but.
Oh, I wanna see if anybody wanted to report on the small city connectors.
Yes.
Sure, um, so uh in a great way, um, we had four, but it wasn't a quorum because I sat apart. Um, but the um ADPC presented um a collection of information, um fraud awareness is where there's um a legislative up- update for um uh small cities in respect. It was an excellent opportunity to have informal dialogue and conversations with other of the small cities that are surrounding us about what are the conditions that you deal with. Um, so yeah, I have Frank and I say candid conversations about how things are proceeding was refreshing. It was enjoyable. Thanks.
Any comments? I think Councilmember Spencer and Councilmember Kurtz went. Go ahead.
Did no additional comments.
Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Kurtz, anything?
I didn't have anything to say. It was a good event.
Okay, good. I'm glad you guys were able to go. I had to, it was my anniversary and I kinda got roped into, you know, do doing that.
Oh, I guess I will say that I won the free mission because of that's right, this year's annual conference. So I saved the city four hundred and something.
Nice.
So you gotta go.
Yeah, I'm going.
God. Good to know. So I will put you down as our third voting delegate for the conference. Mission accomplished.
Mayor, also, uh, Mark, Dan and I um attended and DG came to the um homeless symposium last week, uh, and it was excellent, focused on mental health awareness. Um, and uh Joe mentioned it here. We've heard some some crazy numbers in terms of how much the mental health element is impacting the homeless. And the numbers that were given to us by the experts is it's really thirty percent and it's still, it's a significant number. And we need to have resources, especially for law enforcement, to be able to deal with that. Uh, and they did say for the first time, some of you know I'm an old cop, that cops were the only ones that responded to those things, and that's true. It was the the call that nobody else wanted to handle, and so it was left to us. And now there are resources that are there. Um, and and even going around with the officers and and going in partnership and having mental health potentially be the ones that call the shots, since police are trained in use of force, not in mental health. So it was really good.
Yeah, that it. Anybody else? All right, I'll jump in real quick to my mayor's report. Um, we now have after after Councilmember Salberg and I did a road trip downtown last week, we have Visit Spokane and annual manual goodies. This one's put out by the Inlander. This one's by Visit Spokane. Um, so we do have a a spot in there for for Liberty Lake. Um, and this is, I I get this every year for seventeen years since I've been here. It's a, if nobody else has seen it or it's been a while, we have some out here in the vestibule as long as as long with the Visit Spokane one. I think um yolks usually cat carries both and then they will be in the farmer's market as well. So great, great ways to know what's going on around town and and when people come up at the farmer's market and they say, hey, we just moved here. This is the first thing I go for and and hand it to them. Um, so you have great support from that group. Um, we had the uh Valley Chamber Government Action Committee already gave kind of updates at that point on what plans were uh for their individual jurisdictions uh with regards to the um Blake decision and drug possession, but Mark will give, we've got a good update as of today. So Mark will will provide that little little bit. Uh, we had the SRTC board member, um, and I was voted in to be on the administrative committee, which is responsible for helping provide the budget and um do executive performance reviews. So I'm very honored to to be on that additional committee. And um coming up tomorrow is the Vitalant Health And, um, coming up tomorrow is the Vitalant Health Symposium. Still, it's going to be very interesting again, I'm. Interesting that they put me on a panel and I don't have any healthcare background, but I've got a couple of good topics, uh, to bring up for our experts and we'll see how that goes. Um, Civil Service Commission interviews are tomorrow and Thursday. We have a Legacy Ridge HOA, um, meeting, um, Lisa. Uh, bit planning, building engineering services director Lisa Key and I will be there with regards to Jake's Town Homes. For those of you who don't know, that's the property up behind Chevron and up behind Legacy Villas. We've got a project going in there. Um, Rose Noble, the new Visit CEO, Visit Spokane CEO, I'm doing a tour around Liberty Lake with her on, on this Friday. And, um, we have upcoming GSI and AWC legislative wrap-ups. Busy, busy a couple of weeks as usual coming up. And we are on to city administrator report.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as you can see with the report in front of you, we're at that window of the calendar where we have a lot of stuff going on. And over the next couple of weeks, you can see there's the Windermere Marathon on Sunday, the starting line here is in Liberty Lake. And I did not know this, but this is a Boston Marathon qualifying race. And so, uh, all, all the more reason to kind of pay attention to that. Farmer's Market is kicking off for the season again this coming Saturday. On the same day, the Hometown Heroes Ceremony is taking place over at Ridgeline, followed. Uh, a couple of days later by the rehanging of the Hometown Hero banners on the light poles around town. And then we get into the Memorial Day weekend and all of the events associated with that that, uh, are hosted by Rotary and Daughters of the American Revolution at both. Pavilion Park and Orchard Park. So look at our springtime events calendar for the specifics on those. It has all of that and all of the information as well as a, a link to our website that can take you and, and tell you more, uh, details about that. We mentioned the AWC Conference that's coming up later in June, and we know at least that Councilmember Spencer will be there because he got comped. Uh, so that's good news. Um, any questions about the events and reminders? Right, so we'll move on to, uh, the drug possession law. It was our intent to, to come and talk about. Uh, bringing a first read ordinance back on June sixth to mirror the county's ordinance, but. Uh, as most of you probably know, the special session, um, that the governor called convened today. Uh, a vote occurred into today and the governor has already signed the bill into law. So we have a new drug possession slash drug use law. On the books that will take effect on or before July first. And so some of the things that we have been talking about. Um, you know, obviously were the major points of emphasis for both. Uh, party or not both parties, but both houses in the legislature. And so what we have is we have. Uh, knowing possession of counterfeit or controlled substances is now going to be a gross misdemeanor. And really I think the negotiating point and what was settled on was that the first. Two instances of that is going to be not the three hundred and sixty-four day, uh, potentially. Um, jailable offense, it'll be a hundred and eighty days, uh, and or a thousand dollar fine. And that's, that's lower than what a gross misdemeanor is typically set at. Um, however, once you hit that second conviction, then it bumps it up to three hundred and sixty-four days, uh, as a maximum. The knowing use of controlled substances in a public place was added to this. So that was not part of the former. Uh, legislation or law. Um, and so the knowing use of controlled substances in a public place is now part of the new law. This law that was signed into effect today will prevent local municipalities from regulating drug paraphernalia. Um, but I, I don't know that based on my conversations with the chief, that's a, a big deal in this area. I don't know if that was something that we had. The, the prosecuting attorney had paid much attention to in the old law, so, but that is a, a piece of the new law. Uh, that we're going to have to pay attention to. And so, uh, the, the big thing about this law is that it allows for. Uh, pre-trial diversion programs, um, to, uh, allow some of these. Uh, penalty phases to be suspended. And so that was part of what the negotiation was in both houses. That led to their inability to come to an agreement during the session, but that they've now agreed on, obviously, and, and the governor has signed into law. So that's, that's essentially what will become law in the state of Washington on or before July first. Um, the good news about this is that the city of Liberty Lake, as with any other city in the state, will not have to take. Its own action, set its own law. There's a statewide law that can be, uh, enforced uniformly. And so that's, that's where we are with respect to the Blake fix. Are there any questions that I can help answer or that Sean can help answer?
Well, it's like we have a question from Councilmember Cargill.
Thanks, Mark or, or Sean. Um, are we hearing anything about cities still or counties still moving forward with their own? Even though obviously we have one now and there's not necessarily that need, but I, I heard, uh, from a couple of, um. My friends over on the Snohomish Council and a few other, uh, councils over on the west side, who have said that they're still going to move forward with implementing something on their own. Have you heard that?
So at least two cities have already passed their own ordinances and I'll ask Sean to provide any other insight that he has. Yeah, certainly City Spokane passed theirs last week, um, from that perspective. I think what I initially heard, and I haven't had a chance to read what the, what the passage. Bill today, other than, you know, reading the reports and Mark, maybe you've read it, but I haven't seen it. What, one of the comments I heard was with regard to the diversion program and that aspect. Most of the ones that we've been talking in the Spokane County, because I've had several conversations with attorneys for jurisdictions, including the city of Spokane. Um, everything was about more or less a gross misdemeanor.
Right.
It was the, um, ability to have diversion programs or prosecute prosecutors having decisions. What that would look like and that potentially to your question, local jurisdictions could have some ability in that area. But I don't know what Mark mentioned about that. They may have addressed that anyway. So, um, I, and, and I'm sure what's in there is a preemption language, which the state is saying. We preempted the field. Local jurisdictions can't do anything unless they say you can do X, Y, Z. So to the extent that that may be in there, it's possible, but I'd now look through and see what it says.
Thank you.
I'll follow up on that. Right, any other questions on that?
You, you mentioned the, the term knowing use and that that was new. What, can you kind of expound on that?
So this is a, uh, this is a clause that, in, in, in the bill itself is fifty-five pages. And so we haven't. Gone and done a deep dive yet, but essentially the knowing use, uh, in a public place was added. Um, and so, uh, as you can imagine, the interpretation of knowing is going to be. I think the fulcrum that a lot of what ends up happening in the near future is centered on. Um, what does that mean? I, I don't know. Prosecutor is going to have to figure out how to handle that. Um, but, uh, as we do the deep dive and kind of start asking those questions and getting some answers, we will certainly bring back. Some more updates to the council.
Perfect, thanks.
Anybody else? I know Chief's on the line. Chief, did you have anything to say about the, uh, drug possession law from today?
Not that anyone has, has mentioned there.
Okay, thank you. All right, you wanna go, keep, keep Chief on?
All right, Chief, you're, you're up. We're gonna, Chief is going to give you a, a, a brief update on National Police Week, which started on the fifteenth. Chief?
Awesome, thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council and citizens of Liberty Lake. In nineteen sixty-two, President John F. Kennedy issued the first proclamation for what we know as peace officers. Peace Officers Memorial Day and National Police Week to remember and honor law enforcement officers who, uh. To honor them for their services and their sacrifices. Now, Peace Officers Memorial Day is May the fifteenth and. National Police Week is, uh, all week during that fifteenth, uh, time period. And again, that honors law enforcement officers, that honors law enforcement officers who are killed or, or disabled in the line of duty. I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice. I just wanted to share some stats from the Officer Down Memorial page. Um, we've had forty-two officers lost in the line of duty this year. Last year we lost two hundred and forty-six and the last five years we've lost one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven. In the last ten years, we've lost two thousand, six hundred and thirty-three officers in the line of duty. And all time, we've lost twenty-six thousand, three hundred and eight officers in the line of duty. Now, in summary, in summary, quoting the National Police Week webpage, I want to say that National Police Week offers, offers honor, remembrance. And pure support while allowing, allowing law officers, law enforcement officers, excuse me, survivors and citizens. To gather and pay homage to those who gave their lives in the line of duty. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks Chief and thanks to your, your, and all of our other, um, police officers around the, around the country. That, um, risk their lives on a daily basis.
And your mayor, just lastly, I just want to say, uh, thank you to the citizens of Liberty Lake and our council for your continued support of the police department. It means a lot. Um, we really appreciate it and it helps fuel, fuel us every day, knowing that we, we live in a community. And we do have a city government that is so supportive of our efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Chief? Right, not seeing any. Next, um, department reports, Mark.
So we distributed the department reports for council and if there are any questions, we have department directors either in the room or online that will be able to answer those.
Doesn't look like any.
Doesn't look like there are any. So the, the second, uh, thing that we're going to recognize, uh, Public Service Recognition Week. Uh, was actually last week. And so we were in this conundrum. Do we recognize it earlier at the last council meeting or wait and do it retrospectively? We chose the latter, so. So Public, uh, Service Recognition Week is, uh, usually celebrated in the first full week of May. And it's been celebrated in the first full week of May since the mid-eighties. And this is just an opportunity to recognize those who serve at all levels of, uh, public service. From national government on down to municipalities. And it really gives us an opportunity to, uh, talk about what public employees do, how they do it. Why they do it and how well they do it. And it allows us to hopefully foster pride in public service. And then also, uh, introduce the opportunities, uh, for public service employment to that next generation of folks. Who may be looking for something to do, uh, that has mission and purpose. And so Todd, if you can go. To the next slide, we just want to kind of go through, uh, some of those for the city of Liberty Lake and show you. The folks that are out there every day doing the work that's required to keep a city, uh, running on all cylinders. And so. This is a picture from several council meetings ago where we, uh, gave out some police officer awards. And you'll see there officers Alivas, Arnold and Soul who received those awards. And if you want to hear, uh, Officer Soul's podcast episode, go to our website, um, and it is on there for, for you to hear. If you go to the next one, Todd. Uh, so Chris and I have this in common and most of the pictures that you see me and I'm doing this, he and I must have some. We, we're making like emphatic hand gestures when we make a point. So this is Chris Johnson, our, our PGA pro out at Trailhead. And he's providing a lesson here, um, and, and that team is small, but it does a lot of interaction with the public. Uh, and, and they get a lot of business out there. Next slide. Here you see in our library, one of our librarians, uh, Peter Valhome, uh, who's re-shelving some books. We talked a lot about the library earlier, we will again later, um, but if you haven't visited the library, I would encourage you to get out there. They've got a lot of great programs. Take a look at their website, they've got quarterly reports, uh, and that include calendars of upcoming events. Next slide, Todd. Here you'll see, uh, Emma Sanders, she's on our parks crew. She's either coming from or going to, uh, an area to mow. This is a constant vigil that our crews, uh, undertake during spring, summer to keep, uh, the right of ways, the parks. Uh, the golf course, uh, trimmed and, and usable. Next slide, please. Here you'll see, uh, Ethan Barr, he's on our base, baseball crew. He's doing some maintenance to one of our pieces of equipment. Uh, as he gets ready to go out and maintain the ball fields between the elementary field or elementary schools, excuse me. Next slide, Todd. Mayor talked about this earlier. This is from yesterday's, uh, Arbor Day planting. We talked about the tulip tree, that's it right there. Um, that, uh, Derek Kosanke, uh, Brian Bachman, um, who is that? Uh, Trevor Slocum and Jacob Norance are, are filling in some dirt around. Uh, from our streets crew, facilities crew and parks crew. Next slide, please, Todd. And for those of you who are in our city academy, you probably recognize this scene. This was, uh, was from a couple of sessions ago. Our planning director, uh, Lisa Key and Amy Mueller-Lyle, talking to the academy about land use and zoning. Next slide, Todd. I think this is our last one. And this is, uh, several members of our street crew, and this is one of those really, really important tasks. Getting out there and doing street maintenance work, filling potholes, making sure the streets are travelable for the, uh, the, the driving public. Biking public, walking public. And so this is just a picture. This is by no means exhaustive. But our, our folks are out there doing this work day in and day out, all hours of the day, all temperatures. Um, and so this is just an opportunity to highlight what they do. Tell them thank you. We appreciate it. We couldn't do, uh, we couldn't govern the city without you, couldn't operate it without you, though. So, uh, please, um. Take our thanks, we, we really appreciate it. And with that, any questions about public service recognition? All right, moving on to our capital projects update, I'm going to invite our city engineer David Williams to provide that update.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening, Mayor, city council members and citizens of Liberty Lake. Uh, this is, um. Give you my project and, uh, information here for all of you. I'm going to be covering the slip lane, rapid flashing beacons. You'll see, uh, the rest of these projects here as I described them. Uh, next slide, please, Todd. The first project I'm going to go into is the Slip Lane Project. Uh, the project's start date will be May thirty-first. The notice to proceed was issued, um, there will be a lane closure of the center lanes of northbound and southbound Liberty Lake Road. Uh, for about four weeks, the duration of the project will be about a month or twenty working days. Uh, and I will be in contact with the remaining businesses by the end of this week. Next slide, please. The Rapid Flashing Beacons, this one has been on the docket for a while. Harvest Parkway, Nora Avenue, Country Vista and Sharp Lane. Boone Avenue and North Stevenson Road. The notice to proceed was issued. The work will begin on June fifth. That's about a month and a quarter of working days, uh, of, uh, of work for twenty-five working days. Um, that project, project will begin here shortly as well on June fifth. Next slide, please. A lot of interest has been, uh, exuded about this, uh, Public Works Yard, uh, project. The steel construction has, uh, been erected, the welding and bolt torquing is underway under inspection. A concrete pour will be taking place, uh, I think it's next week and the week after. Uh, we will not be able to actually drive there just for a little while, just to make sure that concrete cures. Um, and Phil Messick is actually on the line as well, too, if he has anything to add about that. But, uh, our road crews and our construction crews are going to be pretty excited about this thing going up. Next slide, please. The Kramer Bridge Project is, uh, the bridge deck was poured completely. The concrete form removed is, uh, is underway right now. In fact, tonight there will be night work on I ninety on the eastbound lanes, probably on the, uh, the number two lane and the number one lane. Depending upon how much work they can actually get done. The night work will take place until Thursday this week. The lane closures will be to remove the concrete form work, uh, from the eastbound and north, I'm sorry, eastbound and westbound lanes. And that project is actually moving very well right now. You can see the green supports are the steel inside of the structure. And if you can't see, uh, one of the pictures, you could see the white cap that shows where, um, you know, that you see to the top left. You can see the white cap was, which is actually where the concrete was poured. The actual approaches will be poured next week, Monday and Wednesday. So this bridge is going to become, uh, much more real here shortly. Next slide, please. The Trailhead Facilities Reconstruction, uh, the concrete deck of the rear patio area was poured, the overhang garage doors were installed. The ladies restroom decorative wall tile is also installed and the sidewalk poured in front of the building, uh, has been, uh, has also been poured as well, too. The existing electrical poles will be removed outside of the building behind the message board in two weeks. And then the three that are next to the golf range will be removed in three weeks. Next slide, please. Our stormwater master plan is definitely underway. We're seeking right now to get an extension for our grant. Um, we're, yeah, actually, it's taking this tension to, to get our grant. Uh, the information they need from our team is being processed. Uh, we're working and to get them an answer to DOE about the extension, um, by first city council meeting in June. The data gaps memo and, uh, pertinent project deliverables are still under review. And that includes our rate study in the bottom left corner of the slide. Next slide, please. Uh, Mark touched on something that our, our road crew is actually doing, where they filled in potholes. Along spread between Multer and the county line. Uh, the potholing took place about one and a half weeks ago. Um, this was a temporary fix for a future roadway project in twenty twenty-four in conjunction with Spokane County. Between now and early twenty twenty-four, I do get a bunch of phone calls about the issues there. We understand, we are. we are still note things in temporarily, but there will be an actual roadway project that will take place. Um, because we understand that there's an issue there. Uh, so we're looking for funding sources and we are currently going to be going into design once we find uh, our funding sources, uh, through SRTC and TIB. Next slide, please. And we've had questions about the dynamic deep compaction at Appleway is a project site that's, uh, through Northwest Trends. Um, they're using a deep compactive effort method, uh, due to some deep issues of subbase compaction that are, uh, necessitated. Deep heavyweight, uh, is actually dropped onto the ground several times. And it makes kind of a thud noise, uh, that reverberates, uh, kind of throughout the area. This work will be taking place for the next two and a half weeks, but we'll be finished then. If you have any questions, please just call me. I'm always open to answer any question that you might have. Next slide, please. Please remember that through active construction zones, they are, these are closed areas. Only construction, uh, personnel are authorized to be in those areas. Next slide, please. If you have any questions, here's my email and my phone number. Thank you very much, Mark.
Right. I, I will say that the, the deep compacting has, has raised a lot of questions and a lot of interesting ideas of what might actually do, including e- each, uh, circle being placed for a new pot plant.
Yeah.
But squash those rumors really quick.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Any questions about the capital projects?
I guess if I could just get a quick summary of Lehman's reference to the deep compaction action, the nature of the ground there and why that's
Okay, so yeah, uh, council member Dunn. So you have an issue with, um, this, uh, like your, your, your subgrade way deep down below. So let's say between fifteen to twenty feet below the surface, they're basically trying to compact that area from the top layer. So dropping down the heavy weight. So they drop down a first, a lighter weight than a much heavier weight. That vibration and that weight actually compacts the ground much deeper than the ground surface.
So it's a, it's a replacement for excavation or it's a, it's an alternative to excavation, uh, and doing the compaction in an excavated hole and then building it back up.
And it's necessary for development property?
It is.
Yes. Yes.
Thanks. Any other questions? All right. Thanks, David. Appreciate it.
All right.
Of course, thank you.
Thanks, David. Our last item on tonight's, uh, administrator's report, uh, is going to come from Kyle Dixon. We've entered our annual audit and he's going to provide an update about the entrance invitation. Kyle?
Thanks, Mark, Mayor, members of council. So yeah, just a very brief update. Uh, we received word back from the auditors. They're currently going through the information we've already provided for our annual twenty twenty-two annual uh, financial accountability and federal single audit. And part of their process is to bring the mayor and council, uh, along with what they plan to focus on each year, uh, and, um, um, costs and timing of the audit. And so that's going to take place next Monday at nine AM and it's going to happen via Teams. And so they have, I believe, already disseminated that information and I wanted to get an idea. I, I know you guys just received this. But is there any, any indication from the council members that that timeframe is going to work for them to, uh, to attend? Got one.
Hit the date again, Kyle.
That is next Monday, the twenty-second at nine AM. Could be about a half an hour. So the reason, and so sorry, the reason I ask is that we do anticipate four or more, we will notice it as a public meeting to comply with open public meetings.
Woman, go ahead, Councilmember Cargill.
I was just gonna say, I might, I might be.
He's iffy.
Great. So, uh, fantastic. So, um, plan on that and, uh, they will walk, uh, you guys through uh, what they're going to be looking for. And they'll ask if there's any areas of interest you guys want to focus on and feel free to speak up, uh, if there's anything you want, uh, them to take a look at. And I think tentatively they plan on wrapping up in July. Um, hopefully that's the case.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
And that concludes my report.
All right. Thanks, Mark. We are on to Parks and Arts Commission. Thanks for being patient. Thanks for joining us.
Uh, thanks, Mayor and, uh, council. Um, my name's John Barr and I'm with the providing the Parks and Arts Commission update and I'll keep this, uh, a brief. Um, projects we're currently working on and upcoming events, um, the DAR, the Daughters of the American Revolution are having a monument dedication of the, uh, Never Forget Veterans Garden Monument on May twenty-ninth at two PM in Orchard Park under the flagpole. Um, there, there is a garden area under the flagpole that they're working on. And I personally recommended to the ladies that, uh, topiary, since that saw the rage and they seemed to like the idea. But I guess we'll see what they, uh, they come up with. Um, also at our last meeting, we had an update from Mark Bits and the students regarding Story Walk. Um, they brought in a prototype that they'd been working on. And they discussed timelines and the students appear to be very enthusiastic for this project. And I also noted that the students appear, appear to be, um, very articulate and impressive and interested in projects and, uh, and regarding Hoop Town and the designs for the basketball court at Pavilion Park. The designs have come in and they're actually quite impressive. Um, and they're currently being reviewed and I really don't know the timeline on that. And I guess we're, in regard to the strategic plan discussions are in the beginning phases and under the topic of things that don't cost anything, um, recent events, if you were to go to Home Depot this weekend, um, I'm sure you've noticed lots of, uh, people in the aisles in the garden section. So, um, I was speaking with the, uh, library director last week and we're, uh, uh, proud to say that we're bringing back the Liberty Lake Garden Contest, uh, bigger than, bigger and better and, um, and we're also, uh, uh, so be sure to start, uh, planting. Also, uh, we're thinking about, uh, planning outdoor garden, outdoor, uh, master gardener presentations outside at the library as well. So that's basically.
You guys are busy. Keep up the good work. Anybody have any questions? Hey, thanks for sticking with us.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next up, library board. Leave this is our, uh, annual report? Quarterly, okay, sorry.
So actually it's kind of like a dual. Yeah, it's actually a dual report. So if you notice on our slide, it says twenty twenty-two annual report, but it is May. Um, so as you see in the ordinance, each year I have to submit a very large reports to the state librarian. Um, this year was twenty pages long, all statistics. And so the thought I had had is, and I wanted to kind of gauge your temperature on it, is instead of the board giving you an annual report in like November that isn't a real full report, we don't have any of our stats for the entire year yet. Um, my thought would be to change the timing of the report and I give it to you at the same time that I submit this report to the state. You're not going to get a more thorough report than this state, this report. It takes me like fifteen hours to complete. So it's, it's heavy. So that is my thought. You guys can answer now or think it over, but that's just something that we would like to propose is that we give our annual report kind of second quarter of the following year. So.
Um, to me it makes sense. I'm, if I, we're not hearing any opposition. I'm assuming that's good for everybody and then we'll just be on an annual basis after that.
Yeah. So you should have a copy of this annual report that I had to submit to the state in your inbox as of yesterday. Um, so we have some numbers that we're going to share with you from the annual report and then just some other kind of goings on at the library, um, for second quarter. So. Interesting. Yeah, so. Sorry, I'm shorter. Okay. So, um, as you know, Teresa Tapaw Hunt, uh, library board trustee member. Um, on Zoom we have Shawna Dean. Um, in the audience we have Kim Gerard and Brad Hamlet. And then, um, we do not have Bob Scadham here because he is out of state right now. So Todd, if you can go to the next slide. Um, so as Jenny mentioned, you know, we were talking about whether to do this as a quarterly report or the annual report made most sense because she had put together all the data last week. And a lot of the information is pertinent to your discussion that you guys are having later on tonight about drafting the ordinance one nineteen C and the verbiage that you are all still deciding on um, within that ordinance. So we thought that we would give you some of the statistics to kind of help guide that information. So you'll see on the board, um, we've outlined our library users. So these are card holding members. Um, you'll see here that we have four thousand five hundred and forty-seven resident cardholders. Those are anybody who live within nine nine zero one nine and nine nine zero one six. We have one thousand six hundred and eighty-two non-residents. So that's someone outside of that zip code with a total of six thousand two hundred and twenty-nine total. The reason this is important because you'll see that a third of our cardholders are non-residents. So they live outside of nine nine zero one nine, nine nine zero one six. At the last meeting on May second, when you guys were drafting the newest iteration of the ordinance, um, it was suggested that six B have added to the pointing of trustees, whether or not they live within the city limits. Um, and there was also a question about voting and also maybe adding in a non-voting member. So we just wanted you to have this information so you could see that a third of the cardholders and library users do not live in the city. Just everybody for representation purposes. Um, Todd, next slide, please. Uh, budgetary numbers. So for twenty twenty-two, we had, um, a budget of six hundred and sixty-two thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars. Um, total expenditure was five hundred and eighty-six and for, or sorry, five hundred and eighty-six thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars, I believe. We had the, what we didn't spend, we would file, adjust, right? Okay. And then you'll see two thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars or fines of fees that we've collected. Um, the five hundred and eighty-three thousand five hundred and thirty-eight was property tax funded. And then, um, Mayor Chris Kamanskas, uh, worked on getting us the building purchase um, of our new building, which came from ARPA funds and the general fund to help fund those. Todd, next slide. So I wanted to share some collection stats. So in our, these are all physical items that the library owns, not digital, all physical items. Um, for twenty twenty-two, we have a collection of twenty-four thousand five hundred and forty-three books, eight hundred and ninety-three audio materials. So those are books on CD. Um, one thousand six hundred and forty-two DVDs. And then as far as our technology for checkouts, we currently have three laptops that check out um, and one hotspot that checked out during twenty twenty-two. So the total physical items in our collection right now for twenty twenty-two was twenty-seven thousand one hundred and five items. Um, Todd, next slide. As far as our electronic collection, um, we have a subscription to the Washington Anytime Libraries and the Cooperative Information Network, Anytime Libraries. Um, in that collection, we have seventy-two thousand six hundred and eighty-one books, sixty-four thousand zero, uh, sixty-four thousand and eighty-nine audio materials. So that would be, um, ebooks that you can listen to. And then we have a hundred and fifty video items. So our electronic collection currently is one hundred and thirty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty. So, um, Todd, next slide. Oh, perfect. So something that I thought was really interesting is I was looking at the data for checkouts for twenty twenty-two. Um, it's the green line. Um, we had a huge number of checkouts last year. As you can see, it's, um, significantly larger than the last couple of years. So last year we had ninety-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-six book checkouts. Um, and that's physical books that were checked out of the library. Our ebook collection was twenty-five thousand two hundred and seventy-nine. So, you know, in the media and you see, you know, all the time they're talking about how, you know, ebooks are going to take over. We're not going to need physical libraries. We're not going to have a need to check out physical books. As far as Liberty Lake goes, that's not, that's not what the trend is showing anymore. We had a quarter of those checkouts being ebooks versus, um, versus physical items. Um, the number did go up during COVID. So I was looking at our ebook numbers for twenty twenty. We had forty-two thousand ebooks that were checked out in twenty twenty, which makes out, makes sense, it being a COVID year. But since then it's declined dramatically. So for twenty twenty-one, we had twenty-eight thousand one hundred and seventy-five ebook checkouts. So that number has calmed down. The other thing I just wanted to point out to you guys is our children's versus adult material checkouts. So Liberty Lake is a family community. Um, families are the most common people that we have coming into the library. We can see that in our checkouts. We had sixty-three thousand um, children's materials checked out last year and then thirty thousand adult materials checked out last year. So that's something that I definitely want to keep in mind as we're designing and building a new library here in the future is making sure that we are um, catering a lot of, you know, think considering what things we want for our kids in the library and what things we want for our adults. So there's that. So, um, you're going to have technology. Oh, yeah. Okay, so this next slide, um, is specific to technology and I believe that um, council member Cargill had recommended that we add to section five in the ordinance verbiage around computer usage and tech equipment. So we definitely want to make sure that you guys are, uh, giving the same information that we have. So we did use the ARPA fund given by city council to purchase those three laptops and the hotspot that was mentioned by GND, um, in twenty twenty-two, we had thirty checkouts of those. Um, for twenty twenty-three this year, the changes is we've added six additional hotspots. Um, within our CIA network that we share with Quarterly, um, we, the hotspots are checked out at a rate of seven thousand and fifty-three and with seventy-four volts. So that's not just, that's not just ours that we hold, but within our whole network. So you can see that that's something that people utilize a lot. So it's definitely something that we're considering as a board for our budget next year. So. Next slide. So, um, the last thing we wanted to share with you guys is some of our program statistics. Um, we get a lot of people coming into the library for our programs that we offer. Um, our highest attended program would be story time. We do story time four days a week at ten thirty on Monday through Thursday. Um, these are our stats for twenty twenty-two. Um, we were holding programs at the library in twenty twenty-two from March onward. During January and February, we had to shut, um, shut our programs down due to the Omnicrom surge. So this is for ten months of the year. So, um, during twenty twenty-two, we held a hundred and sixty-two storytimes. Um, and they were attended by four thousand nine hundred and forty-four kids and parents or caregivers. Um, we hold story time from ten thirty to eleven and then we do playtime from ten thirty to eleven. Um, from eleven to eleven thirty. Um, some other children's programs that we offer for that zero to five age group would be our totally untidy toddlers, our messy outdoor sensory playtime and our one thousand books before kindergarten program, which encourages parents to read a thousand books to their kids before they go to kindergarten to really help with their early literacy skills. Um, next we have our school age programs. Um, we kind of break this down into two categories now. We have the six to nine age group. And then we have our tween age group, which is for ages ten to twelve. Um, during twenty twenty-two, we offered fifty-five programs to this age group and we had seven hundred and eighty-eight kids attend. We do programs like Lego Club, Chess Club, Coding Club. Um, this year we started doing steam with Gizmo, which has been highly attended. Um, we do kids crafts, um, for our tween age group. Um, who like to be in their own category because they're much older than the six-year-olds. Um, we've started doing tween book boxes. So each month you can sign up and they get to come to the library and pick up a box. They take the box home. In the box, me and Aaron have put in, um, books that they can keep. A library book. We put in crafts, snacks and activities. So it's like a subscription box. Um, so we do that for tweens, aunts, teens. But that's something that they have really loved. And then we've also been offering tween cooking classes, um, tween crafts and, um, their fours after hours in the library. So we do that for the younger kids and the older kids on separate nights of the week. So, um, I have Michaela here. She is going to talk about our tween and adult programming.
Next slide, please, Todd. Um, our teen programs right now, uh, for ages thirteen to eighteen, last year we had twenty-three of them with an attendance of ninety-one. It is very difficult for us to get teens into the library. However, they do love to come volunteer. So that number does not reflect the volunteers who come into the library. That's only the programs that they are coming to. Um, they are part of the eighteen advisory group. I have about sixteen kids at any given time who are coming into the library to volunteer. Um, and to. and to direct our programming. They're directing several events for us this summer as well. They also have a monthly movie night as they have asked for somewhere to to be just for teens when a lot of the places in town are closed to them later at night. So they just want a teen night to come to that. And they also have snacks and crafts. We teach them how to cook often. I try. I'm not very good. And they also have a monthly bookbox subscription. Next slide, please. This is where I'm going to brag on my kids for just a little bit. We have an excellent group of volunteers who come to the library. So this is more recent, not necessarily from twenty two, twenty twenty two, although there are a lot of things that they came to help us with. This is my teen advisory group. Like I said, there are about sixteen of them at any given time. So far this year in two thousand twenty three, they have contributed fifty five hours of volunteer service to the library, which is excellent. There are members from CD, Ridgeline, Selkirk, Gonzaga Prep, and then a couple of homeschool kids. And anyway, these are pictures of some of the programs that they've helped us with. They came and did our big Halloween party last year, which we had over three hundred people there. They were there all night setting up, directing people in costume all night, which was awesome. They've also helped direct some of the other things that we do. So an escape room last year and a Lego club, actually a separate Lego competition that we did, where people dropped off their Lego creations, mostly kids. We did have one adult dropped off their Lego competition at the library. And then we had over a thousand votes during the month of January, where people came in and voted and chose a winner. The second part of this on the right side is actually in April, a group of teen volunteers came and moved about four thousand books in the library. They took them out of genre classifications, which they had been in before, and realphabetized them. So they moved about a sixth of the books in the library in one day. While we were closed to the public, it was a Sunday, so we're never open on Sundays. They came in, did all of that moving. They were there for a collective twenty two hours that day, those five teens who came and volunteered. So if you see them in the community, please, they're awesome, awesome kids. So please thank them. And they are, several of them also directing a STEM camp this summer for the younger kids at the library that they came up with entirely on their own and had nothing to do with it. But they will be doing like egg drops and invisible ink and they're really awesome. So. Next slide, please, Todd. And then for adult programs, we do a lot fewer adult programs. The goal of them is really to either teach new skills or just have a community space for adults to come meet up with other adults, which they don't get to do as often sometimes. We often do craft nights, but we have also had educational classes and hobby classes recently. We've had like the inland empire bonsai society came and did an event. I've had STCU come and do events, different people from the community. So most of it is crafting, but a lot of it is also educational classes. Excellent. Oh. Yes, sorry. Thank you for reminding me. Really quickly, I was also supposed to talk about Ridgeline. Recently, we've been working with the Ridgeline students on a couple of different projects. So if you haven't been to the library lately, they have a display of fantasy or fairy tale books that are completely made up. But the students in their art program all made book covers. They're so convincing that last week a little girl came up to me and was like, where can I find this book in the library? And she was so disappointed that it was not a real book. So I feel very bad for her. If you come there in the juvenile section, they were all created by high school students here. They're excellent. We have also been working, the Parks and Arts Commission, we were working on with those barrels that are supposed to be in the parks and at the farmer's market. We've now also looped in the Ridgeline Fine Arts teachers who are working on those four barrels with their students. And as a final thing, we have asked them to do some of the graphic work for our summer reading program. So there are actually a couple of students right now, I'm getting the mockups, I think tomorrow or Thursday, who have actually gone and designed us posters and art that will be used in our summer reading programs. It's very cool.
It's so great that Liberty Lake now has elementary school, middle school, and high school here in town that we can partner with for great activities like this. So we, let's see. The last thing I wanted to mention, Todd, can we go back to the photo slide? Is our our family programs that we do. Some of our big ones are Touch a Truck, which last year we had two thousand people attend. We usually do bring in some kids performers. So last year we had Alex Alex Zerby, the Zaniak, who came and did all kinds of incredible magic tricks and pogo sticking and juggling. So he was great. We had two hundred and fifty people attend that program. And then we usually do like our Halloween and Christmas parties. So I have some photos of our great officers who are along with the mayor judge our costume contest. So these are some of the great family programs that we do each year at the library. So I think you have the last. Oh, yeah, this is just. Website analytics. So in reviewing our users for last year, two thousand twenty two, we had twenty seven thousand seven hundred and seven visits to our website. In fact, I believe according to city data, it's the second highest clicked website off of our city page, the homepage being the first. So it's the most visited section within the city's own website. But that's something we wanted to share as well. So I think now we'll open it up.
Questions for us?
Anybody have any questions for the annual report?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for the work here and especially the exposition of teen volunteer opportunities. That's something personally I hadn't been really aware of. I just want to draw encouragement to that, that creating opportunities for kids to recognize how volunteering in the community is rewarding, not just for themselves, but for the others that are in there. So I'm, it's grateful to hear this. Thanks.
Yeah, and it's really, as someone who has a teen at Ridgeline, I can tell you for National Honor Society, you have to have a hundred plus hours of volunteer time. And unfortunately, you know, teenagers lack prefrontal cortex yet, so they are all doing everything with extrinsic motivation. And so eventually it becomes intrinsic and they enjoy it lifelong as an adult. But if they get started just because they need volunteer hours. And so we were looking at things in Spokane, Spokane Valley. And my son is in driver's ed, but he's not driving yet. So that means that I get the opportunity to volunteer as well. So so having it down the street makes it really beneficial. Any other questions?
I'll jump in. Thank you. So on your request for the annual report, which is great, by the way, and I totally understand why you want to coincide it with your other report. Should we, going forward, then expect to hear a quarterly report in April?
So my thought for the ordinance would be four times a year, do a quarterly report and have the annual report be in the second quarter. Because generally I have to do it in April, May, or June. It kind of varies each year.
No, I get it. I totally understand. So, so we'll have five then, an annual and then four quarterlies? Is that what you're thinking?
Or would the annual be one of the quarters?
Yeah.
So kind of like a dual?
Okay, okay.
That makes sense.
Okay. Combined.
Okay, yeah.
Makes sense.
One other question.
Yeah, sure.
Just your opinion, the three laptops checked out thirty times over the course of a year. Is that good?
So we purchased the laptops with the ARP funds. They did not arrive until May. So it was for May to December that we had the thirty laptop checkouts. I would say, just from looking at the numbers, the thing that people want more is the hotspots over the laptops. So it will be interesting to see what our numbers end up being for two thousand twenty three. I would just anticipate that the hotspots are going to be a lot higher than the laptop uses. Generally, we have the same handful of people who are kind of just taking turns checking out the laptops. So they're definitely getting used, but kind of by the same people over and over again.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Not. Yeah, go ahead.
Phil's, Phil's where I'm going and I'm hesitant to bring this up, but I want to make sure that one nineteen C, the way it's written right now, has a requirement for the end of the year. So if we're going to make a change, I want to make sure it's consistent with what you want to do. So do you have to turn in your reports to library, state librarian by like the end of June? Is that the requirement or is there a particular time period?
So they usually give it to us in March and the date kind of varies. So last year it was in June that we had to submit it. This year it was in May that we had to submit it. So it kind of varies. I was just wondering if we could just say once a year, the board will give an annual report and not say end of year. And then it kind of gives us a little bit of flexibility of when the state.
And I'm just trying to, I've been playing with it since you made the comment. And so I'm just thinking from the standpoint of if you said something after the first quarter or would it have to be after the second quarter that you would give the stats for the previous year during the following year. So I'm just trying to figure out what works for you.
I would say after the second quarter.
Okay. And if you want to give it earlier, that's fine. I just want to put something in here because right now there's a requirement at the end of the year.
Yeah. So I would say after the second quarter, just in case it goes into June like it did last year. I don't know if that was just because it was a COVID year. So.
Okay.
Yeah. Thanks, John. All right. No other questions? Thank you so much. Great report. Next, Planning Commission. Richard Seiler has been hanging out with us online. We're going to make sure we can hear him and he's going to give the Planning Commission report.
And I, Mayor and council members, I appreciate this opportunity. I don't have a lot of computer time left, but anyways, we're working on some items this year for our comprehensive plan and development code. It's really our two thousand twenty three annual docket. One of the things we got to work on is some public utility distribution stuff that is mainly just to fix things so that we make it simpler for everybody. Another item is in our ClearView Triangle Vision Clearance at Intersections. That's really just to do some work there to make sure we meet some standards on our, on how we approach in cars and ClearView areas on our intersections. We do want to work on a fencing standard this year that helps with the utilities and all the problems the country has had with some of the, I guess vandalism and whatnot at utility places. And this is to support, I believe, the the city water and sewer district are the ones that are asking us for the start of this, but it really applies to any, any of our utilities. We also want to go work on some seasonal and special event community regulations to make them simpler, easier to use, make them simple, make them better for the public. Again, this is one of our, our goals. We started a few years ago was to simplify our our things so that, our codes so that they're easier to use. There's some updating our engineering standards, some best practice, minor errors, some stuff there. Not a whole bunch of stuff there, but we, we do need to work on that. One of the big things that are coming up is the River District, River, Greenstone has asked us to look at open space category for their district SAPs to allow for their common areas to be classified as open space. What that would allow them is to be able to put open space criteria for what can and cannot be done in open space. I think there's some good things there. I think they want to do some stuff that may not be palatable, but we're going to go work with them and go look at at providing some information on open space and then providing recommendations through the council for approval. And then the other one is the River District. Again, Greenstone has asked us to go look at creating some signage things that are specific to the, the River District. This is one that's a little bit difficult because we did some signing changes for them in the last year or two. And you know, this, this is a tough one because what's probably good for the River District for signage is probably good for Liberty Lake. So we're going to look at that and, and make a determination and a recommendation on whether we think a River District SAP change is required or just fix our codes to accommodate the River District in, in all of our city codes. And I think that's pretty much it for right now that we're going to be working on. And we've got a lot of stuff on our docket to, to go, go do. So any questions, comments?
Let me look around. Anything? I don't see any.
Okay, very good. Thank you, guys.
Glad, glad your battery held out and thank you for doing this.
I'm down to two percent, I think. So that's a good thing. Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Bye bye.
And last but not least, we have the Liberty Lake Sewer and Water District.
Hi, Nada with Liberty Extreme Water District. Good evening. Couple of quick things. One, if you all got one of these and you may get one of these, it's a letter from the district and it says action required and backflow non-compliance notification. I may be kind of the jerk here. You probably said a little too much on this. Nobody's not, not in compliance. My wife was really irritated by this and called me at the district to tell me how stupid this was. So point taken. We're not going to use this kind of language anymore. Everyone should be thinking about getting their backflows tested this year like we have to do every single year. So turn your forms in. You have till June thirtieth. You get a letter like this with the red writing all over it. You have till June thirtieth. Don't worry about it. Don't call your spouse and yell at them or anything like that. So anyway, that's that. The other thing was, I just want to know, thanks, Mark. I got the stuff on the camping regulation, which I think you guys are going to talk about tonight. Just, this is what I was waving at the other day. I just want to make sure that because a lot of the land that's near undeveloped city land is undeveloped sewer water district land, that we have similar rules so that the police are empowered to do things that they need to do wherever they need to do them. So we're looking at trying to incorporate similar language into our rules and regulations as well. And I think that'll be great for the police because frankly, on that trail, all the interesting stuff is on the west side of the trail, which is mostly district land, not city land. So we just want to make sure we're working together on that. And also thank you for the fencing consideration from the planning commission. That's all.
Right. Any questions?
Any questions for anybody?
Nope. All right, thanks. Okay, moving on to workshop discussions. I know it's, it's nine thirty. Does anyone need a five-minute nature break or are we good? Let's go ahead. We'll break for five minutes for.
May as well.
All right, we'll be, we'll, yeah, well, we're not going to disconnect. Yeah, we'll be back in front. Okay, everybody, welcome back. Thanks for bearing with us while we took a little break here. Next up on our agenda are two workshop discussions. The first one is farmers market participation, which had been preliminarily discussed in an earlier council meeting and is back up. The farmer's market does start this Saturday. And I just, I'll, I'll start by just saying I did get ahold of the PDC and ran this, this whole situation by them. And they really gave us, gave me pretty much the same answer they did several years ago when we were questioning the mayor's column. I think it was four years ago in the splash during an election in that if this is a, I had to write it down, usual and customary activity for council members or any of the elected officials that it's not, it's not an issue. That if, you know, there's, there's a violation, there's a method, people can issue a complaint to the PDC. So that was their, their their recommendation and that was their feedback. Ironically, this morning when I opened up Facebook, you know, we all see those memories in the morning, those who do Facebook. The first one that popped up was eight years ago. It was the opening day of the farmer's market. So we've been doing this for eight years plus. That may not have been the, the first year. So we're at least on year eight of doing this with the exception of two years ago, doing it every Saturday. So I'd just like the council to take that into consideration. So I will open it up now for comments and from there. Well, I will have Councilmember Solberg first, then Councilmember Spencer.
So just in terms of the time, on June first, two thousand twenty one, a council member moved to amend the agenda and that was where the decision was made that the farmer's market be staffed only by city officials who are not candidates for election or by approved nonprofit organizations. And so that's where we are now.
Yeah, and it wasn't a resolutionary thing. It was just a vote in council.
Yep.
Thank you. Councilmember Spencer, you're next.
I would just say, last year I, I attended several farmer's markets and, you know, had lots of good conversations with the citizens. I feel like, and, and you're going to have to remind me the phrase, phrasing, was it usual and ordinary?
Usually, usual and customary.
Usual and customary. So I would say if that's something that, that we have council members and the mayor do on off years, that there would be no reason why that couldn't continue to take place. Assuming we have something in place that, you know, if you are found campaigning, that you would lose that privilege.
Exactly. Okay, next, anybody else? Councilmember Kurt?
I think one of the questions I had was, I think that
I think one of the questions I had was, I think that um the council members probably should or will know what their expectations are um regarding any sort of campaigning if it's allowed, um, and they're on the ballot. Um, what I would want to know is what we can also do to support the public understanding what they can and can't talk about there so that it's not this awkward conversation and things get um misinterpreted. Um, so if there can be, if, if this is what people want to do, if there can be some signage, um, so the public knows the limits of what can be talked about too. So it's not an awkward conversation for everybody every time.
Got it. Okay, anybody else? Um, Councilmember Cargill, then Councilmember Van Orman.
Uh, my position on this remains the same. Um, I, I think it provides an unfair advantage to any city person, any city elected um, member of this body or anybody else who serves on any of those other city commission or board, uh, if they are running for office to have access to this this type of activity. And again, it's not that I don't trust people to, to do the right thing, but sometimes as Councilmember Kurtz points out, it's provides for very awkward conversations if you have someone come up and want to talk about the election or want to talk about a contribution or whatever. So that is my concern is that it's um it, it is not fair to those who are running for office who are outside of the city, that they, they don't get this opportunity like the rest of us would or other members of the, of other city commissions and boards. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, or Councilmember Van Orman.
Well, I choose, thinking about six of us are up for reelection. Um, we have so many wonderful uh service organizations that could fill in that spot throughout that whole summer before. You know, during the farmer's market. I think that we should refer to them and we also have our community community engagement group to help us as well. Um, and that way it would take the candidates, whether it's candidates running against all of us or out of the equation.
Anybody else? Councilmember Dunn?
Um, I would also use the words unfair advantage regarding an incumbent to a candidate. Uh, I feel like uh, also that the community engagement uh commission that we've established uh could be a really great uh engage point for them to be able to uh staff farmer's market actions.
Okay. And Mayor Pro Tim.
I really don't have anything to add.
Okay.
Already been said.
Okay. Um, just a couple of things um before we obviously, we, there was a vote before, so I'd assume maybe this would, oh.
There's, there's not a motion right now.
Right.
Um, how, however, the action that was taken two years ago, um, at that time, the mayor was up for reelection. There was, there was a candidate that had filed. Um, I would like to, to at least consider in this that um uh, once again, my position hasn't changed either, that the citizens have the right to have a conversation with their mayor. And if the, if nobody is running against, then I can't see where that's an issue. In, in my twelve plus years of going to the farmer's market, uh, I never once heard a political campaign conversation going on. And I was there multiple times. And last year I was there almost every, every week. So.
Okay. I would just like to uh also add, um, you know, and I, I respect the idea about having our our community groups and our community engagement groups, but I know we had one, one of our friends in the library, um, members, you know, speak, uh, at, at the last discussion. There are questions asked of those community members, community engagement. We've got one of, at least one of our members here today that they can't answer about what's going on in the city. You know, in the past, we've had um some of our directors, even city administrator there. And I, I don't know if that was an edict before this, but you know, our staff works really hard, five plus days a week and there's no way I'm going to require them to be there. If they want to on their own time, that's great. But they deserve their weekends and our citizens deserve getting straight answers about what's going on in the city. Somebody, most likely somebody on the, on the um Parks and Arts Commission may not know what's going on with a project down the road. Um, I think it's just fair that there's somebody there to answer their questions. Um, and I'm not going to get as passionate about it as I did two years ago. I know I kind of lost my cool, but really this is taking, this would take away council members or the mayor's ability to do our job, which is inform the public, engage with the public and let them know what's going on. And I end up asking more questions and learning more sometimes from them than, than the other way around, just in, you know, we're not around the whole city all the time. Um, so I just like to, you know, add, add that and, you know, I appreciate um Councilmember Solberg adding, you know, um, we don't know how this week is going to, to filter out. Um, but I would respectfully ask that, you know, those people who might be running for reelection, if they don't have an opponent that you consider allowing those people there to do their jobs. I mean, I have other things, you know, I've, I've got a father who's dying of cancer. I could be spending every Saturday this summer with him, but um, I choose to split that time. I would and, and serve this city um and, and spend my time another part of the week with him. That's how important this is. So that being said, is we have a motion one way or the other.
I've just got another question. I, I guess, and to pose to the council, do, do we feel like we have some sort of fiduciary duty to the public to show up at the farmer's market? I, I don't know the answer to that, but um I'm just wondering, you know, that is an opportunity for us to engage directly with our citizens.
And this has been going on several minutes from several administrations ago. It started off with Mayor Peterson attending the farmer's market and then um, and then council members joined in. I know um former Mayor Burkner did it when he was a council member and his mayor. And, and again, I've been, I was doing it for six and a half years as, as council member and then now in this role. So it's, to me, it's part of, part of our duty. It's not required, obviously, but it has become usual and customary for um, one or more elected officials to be there on a weekend to engage with the public and know what's on their mind.
Here.
Yes.
Yeah, I have a question. Uh, I don't know who brought it up. Not if it's Annie or who brought it up, but uh, what would this, specifically, what would this, these rules of engagement sign actually say?
I don't know.
I don't know.
Well, in my mind, you know, it, it's a simple, if somebody comes up and asks you about an election or another official, you say, I can't have this conversation here. And that's, that's the end of it.
I mean, it could be like a, one of the big market signs that has a big like Ghostbusters thing through. It says no campaigning. Yeah. I mean, seriously, it could be that simple. Um, we want to talk about city business, talk about city business, what's going on, but we don't talk about campaigns here.
Anywhere on property.
Yep.
Yep. Do we feel like we need to answer this tonight since it is filing week?
The market starts Saturday.
I understand. We're talking one, one day.
Uh, you'd probably have three Saturdays, uh, because we wouldn't have another meeting until.
Just ask them.
Just another question. How, how many of the council members actually have been showing up in the past to the farmer's market? I guess that would be one question.
Tom's a regular attendee. I know, um, former council member Kennedy was myself. Former Mayor Burkner. We've had other people come on, you know, occasional. But you know, and again, it's not, it's not required. So it's really great to have. Um, and frankly, the, the booths stood empty most of twenty twenty one. Yeah.
I'll just make one more comment that, you know, I don't, I, I don't know that it's necessarily fair to um say any city council member can do it. I, and I can't remember exactly what the language says, but I think it should be anyone who's running for elected office, regardless of whether on, they're on the city council or not. Um, so if we're gonna, if we're gonna reconsider this or we're gonna talk about the sign or whatever, um, my position is that it, it doesn't matter if you're on the city council or if you're running for dog catcher, you shouldn't be at that station, in my opinion.
Is that throughout the entire, whether there's an election going on or not?
Well, I don't know. I don't know that we can define that because what if somebody decides that they're gonna, yeah, they don't, they don't do the, the primary, but they decide they're going to do a writing campaign against somebody. That's where it kind of gets sticky.
So when the school board comes to share our tent with us on a rate on that, like they do on a regular basis to inform the public of what's going on at the school district. So are you, you, are, are people willing to make that decision for their body? I would think that that would be up to the school district board.
Well, if we have a sign up that says.
Yeah. Right, but it, but again, you know.
Then when they come, and we never talked about when they were there before. We never talked about it.
Yeah. Yeah, I just feel that, that would not be this bodies purview to, to, to say whether or not they can attend or not. We, you know, I would think that would be up to the school district or the fire district. If the fire department was there, but that's just those are, they are their own elected bodies. They should decide that for their own bodies.
Hmm. If you guys want to wait, I'm gonna, I'm not running. So I already told them I'll be there the first two Saturdays to help out.
So I'm willing to have the discussion about people who don't have someone running against them by Friday now, so that we could, if someone wants to be there on Saturday, they can do that and have the larger discussion about the rest of us, um, when we have more time because we're kind of running up again. Um, so I would, I mean, I guess make a motion that anybody who is not opposed in the election as of five PM on Friday, be allowed to be at the farmer's market.
Motion and a second by Councilmember Solberg. All any more discussion?
With a sign?
With a sign.
Well, yeah, we can come up with something.
And then as far as addressing the rest of it about the rest of us, we'll reserve that for, hopefully put that on the next agenda.
Well, I think the sign applies whether you're having an opponent or not.
Yeah.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Because it easily could be, well, I'll just use the mayor as the example. Well, mayor, who should, who do you think is?
That's right.
Can't talk about that.
Nope, that's my point.
Yeah.
So it's not about our own individual campaigns, it's about everybody else.
Yeah, but I'm not talking about your campaigns either.
Right.
So that's.
Right.
To his point.
Right. And I'm sure David could come up, come up with an engaging, fun sign that would get people's attention, but make a point. Kind of like the Ghostbusters.
Yep.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other further comments? All right, not hearing any. Um, all in favor of um, Councilmember Curtis' motion to allow those with active campaigns without an opponent, that me and the booth at Farmer's Market, please say aye and keep your hand with a sign. I like that. Okay, please say aye. So, what's your hands we got? Hold on, hold on, keep your hands up so I can see. All right, those opposed? Okay, motion passes five to dissenting Councilmembers Cargill and Follier. Thank you. All right. Um, okay, it is nine forty-nine. Do we have a motion to extend the meeting since we're obviously not even to action items yet?
So.
Okay, we have a move to.
Now, let's go ten thirty and see if we can make it.
Oh, okay. Do we have a second to, um, to impose, to extend the meeting to ten thirty?
Second.
And a second, and all those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes were extended to ten thirty. I am going to um ask a quick question. Kyle, how long do you need for your city insurance?
Two minutes.
Okay. I was going to ask if somebody wanted to move it, but if it, I'm going to, we're going to put a timer on you.
Please do.
Okay. All right. Kyle Dixon is up with a um in update on our city insurance. Um, it came up during the last budget cycle about, um, we had, it had been a while since we went out for competitive bids. So he's been going through that process and this is just the beginning of the conversation. No decisions to be made. You're on, Kyle.
Perfect. So yeah, this is just an update on the process. And so in your packets, uh, we had the pricing for our current insurance provider and then two other quotes that we received uh kind of throughout the spring. And so everybody has the same information. We have a statement of values for our property, for our buildings, for our vehicles, for all of our improvements that they use to generate those quotes. And so as you can see, you know, we got some pretty uh, some, some pretty big disparity in some of the um information we received back. And so these workshops were always going to be intended to be a discussion on, okay, so we've been with one insurance company for twenty-two years and they've always been the best provider slash low cost provider somewhere in the middle there. And so what this I think is going to morph into as we progress is likely a transition and it's going to be council's uh, uh, decision on, on doing that. But this would be the first time we went with the outfit that was not Cities Insurance Association Washington. And so we will uh further engage them. This is kind of a, this is a two-way street. So they're evaluating us just as much as we're evaluating their price. And so they're going to have a site visit uh that I've kind of planned for June. And as this unfolds, we will, this will be kind of a regular update uh to further these discussions. Um, but as it sits right now, the price is going to render much of that discussion, I think, moot because it's such a significant uh price decrease. Uh, but be that as may, we'll, uh, we will have those discussions as this process plays out. I just wanted to see if there's any questions you guys had uh with the material that we've received so far, uh, in understanding that we have several more updates available for our decisions made.
Anybody have any questions?
I just have one.
Okay.
What have we been paying?
So our last, uh, so our last bill, so our last annual insurance premium was five hundred and sixty-six thousand.
Yep.
Oh.
And that's a, that's about a fifty-two percent increase over the last two years.
I guess I was under the impression when I read this that this was the new proposal, but that's the old proposal.
That is, that is, so those are twenty twenty-three rates for CIAW.
And you haven't gotten any pre, any quotes from anybody else yet then?
No, there's three in here.
Yeah, there's, so three total. With the understanding that our current one would likely be higher.
So these other numbers are their quotes?
Yes.
So WCIA, which is the one that's used by most is definitely the lowest and the most used across the state.
And that's who we're engaging with right now, just based on their initial uh proposal.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Anybody else? Councilmember Dunn?
Hey, Kyle, I've learned recently through experience that the value of an insurance company is best tested in a claim rather than the cost of the premiums.
You're absolutely right. You could not be more right.
Yeah, I'm going to ask you gently, please refer uh to the references list and try to engage with some of the cities identified in comparable size for their claims experience.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And so part of this discussion was going to be when we got these numbers back, who we have been, who we know is almost as important to your point as what the price is. So we know what we're getting with CIAW. Never had an issue, a flawless track record with our relationship with them. So that's where this discussion kind of plays out in council's hands is what is that? What do we know now? What is that worth versus a potential transition?
That's why, that's why we're not in a, you have to choose the lowest bidder situation here. All right. Well, Kyle, you did great. Minute fifty-one.
Thanks.
All right, um, moving on to general business consent agenda. Mayor Pro Tim, you're up.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve general business uh consent agenda items ten A and B.
Second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dunn. Any questions? Not hearing any. Um, all in favor of approving consent agenda A and B, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, motion passes unanimous.
Make a motion. Okay.
Yeah.
Yep, make a motion to approve or authorize the mayor to sign the agreement for fitness classes in the park provided by Jennifer Morton.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Solberg. Any questions? Not hearing any. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any question, any uh, any opposed? All right, motion passes seven zero.
Combine these.
What?
Can we combine these?
Uh, Sean, can we or not?
Well, they're all individual agreements. They're, they're all instructors, but they're all separate. That's why they came this way, but they're all teaching similar classes.
Okay.
Make a motion authorize mayor to sign the agreement for fitness classes in the park provided by Aaron Kramer.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Spencer. Own, any discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Right, motion passes seven zero.
Make a motion authorize mayor to sign an agreement for fitness classes in the park provided by Dissa Jennings, did I say that right?
Maybe Dissa, I don't know.
Dissa?
Okay, we have a second by Councilmember Van Orman. Any questions on this one? Not hearing any. All, in, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any. Motion passes seven zero.
Make a motion to approve moving forward with the Storywalk Project at Orchard Park as recommended by the Parks and Art Commission. Second.
Second by Councilmember Solberg. Any questions on this one? I actually did have a question. I didn't see the to, the, the amount that we're approving. That we're approving.
So there isn't an amount that we're proving at this point, because there is a, going to be a donation from Kiwanis. And then, uh, the city is actually gonna be funding the rest of this.
Okay, yeah, the reason I was asking.
Yeah, through the public art fund.
Okay, but we still, we don't know approximately what that's gonna be, it's kind of hard to prove something without having a, a dollar maximum.
No, I think, I think what, what we're doing is, is the Parks and Arts Commission is just looking. To get a blessing to move forward with the project, um, knowing that it has been funded through their public art fund in the strategic plan. And through the capital facility, facilities point, plan, and we are, um, receiving a donation for it.
Okay, yeah, and so the action item is just to move forward with the project.
Rights. Exactly, yep.
clarify that, it was a little, I was a little confused, all right.
Yep.
Any questions on that one? All right, all in favor of approving, um, moving forward with the story walk, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes seven zero.
Make a motion authorize the purchase of a tool cat in the amount of eighty-nine thousand, five hundred, twenty dollars and ninety-three cents.
Second, we have a second by council member Kurtz, any questions on this one? Not hearing any, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Make a motion authorize the purchase of a heated pressure washer in the amount of ten thousand, nine hundred, ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thanks, all right, second by council member Dunn, any questions?
Oh, sorry, plus tax.
Oh, plus tax, okay.
No question, just one comment, this one better be one hell of a pressure washer for that amount.
It looks pretty, it's heated, man.
Hey, I'm ready, if you can do a second one for the heat one, I'll take a heat one.
So, so Jen, just high level, what projects, what does, does, does this get used for?
So, right now, we, uh, we take, example, we take our trucks, our big trucks down to the car wash. To wash them off from salts and debris and Derek, help me out, I see you're on. Um, this, this is heated versus the pressure washers that we have currently, they just hook up to a cold water tap or a faucet. Um, on the outside and the hot water will actually get the, the oil, the grease, the grime. The salt, the debris off versus the cold water, uh, pressure washers that most people are accustomed to.
All right.
Um, it will also help us with any vandalism.
Vandalism, yep.
Um, to be able to utilize the trailer versus just having a single station ver, uh, at the street yard or the park yard. Uh, having it on a trailer will allow us to use it mobily. Um, and take care of any other areas that we need to accomplish.
All right, any other questions? All right, not hearing any, all in favor of item F to authorize the purchase of the heated pressure washer, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, right, motion passes seven zero.
Make a motion to authorize mayor to sign another agreement, the agreement for children's classes in the park provided by Think, Play, Speak LLC.
Second.
Yeah, a second from council member Salberg, any questions? All right, not hearing any, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
Make a motion authorize mayor to sign the lease agreement between City of Liberty Lake and Legacy Church at the property, for the property at twenty-three, one twenty-three East Mission Avenue.
Second.
A second from council member Dunn, I'm sure there might maybe questions on this or not. Go ahead, council member Van Orman.
I, I'm assuming that our attorney has already looked through the lease and everything looks.
I did, yes.
Be, okay, and it lasts until twenty twenty-four, correct?
It's twelve, uh, is it eighteen months and six or twelve and six, I can't recall.
So, yeah, so the initial term is eighteen months and then the tenant has an option to extend by six, yes.
Yeah, and I know this pushes our timeline for the library out, but we haven't even started the map, the, the plan, the master plan for it, um. So, this is kind of, we don't have the bandwidth to even start that yet, because of our other projects, so it's really kind of worked out. We'll continue to get even more rental revenue to put toward the renovation. There's no other questions, um, I will take a vote, any, all in favor of approving the agreement, lease agreement with Legacy Church, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes seven zero, we are on to council comments. Do we have any additional comments? Once, twice, three, okay, we're on to public hearings and appeals, Lisa. Lisa, you're on mute, I don't know if you know that. Okay. I thought she was here earlier.
I am, okay. Sorry, my apologies, uh, next slide please. So, um, we, I'm gonna try and be really quick, I know that we've workshop these already, um. Uh, we have two, uh, hearings tonight, one is for the, uh, the first one is for, yeah. Can we go back for a second? I'm sorry, can we go back?
Building heights, building heights.
Uh, the first one is for building heights, yes, and so, oh, and, yes, next slide please. So for both of the cases, the planning commission, um, made a finding that the required CIPA. Review had been completed on the, uh, on the proposed amendment. All public agency, it, all public and agency notice requirements have been met. The public was provided the opportunity for early and continuous participation. And the public had the opportunity to submit written comments, next slide please. So these are the, the sections of code that are being modified in the building height definition. Um, and method of measurement, and next slide please. Next slide please. Next slide please, there we go. And so this is the old definition and it's really complicated and we don't have, um, the data that we're provided. For residential building permits does not provide us with the information to be able to make this measurement, next slide please.
Lisa, can you put your microphone up just a little bit?
Yeah.
Thank.
Is that better?
Yes, thanks.
Um, so basically, we're changing the definition. To building height is the vertical distance measured from the highest grade on the front elevation to the highest roof line of the building. And we have here an example of exactly what we get with, um, a, a building permit. And the information that we have related to elevations, we do not get topographic surveys. We do not have the information to, to follow the methodology that was in the code that almost no one can follow unless they, uh, do. Uh, um, uh, acrobatic maneuvers with their algebra. Next slide please. Um, so again, the, we've explained that this is how we're, what we're proposing is the, um, new definition, next slide please. And we're also changing in each and every zoning district in the development code. We have a section and it's, it's, uh, city code section two. Um, blank eight, so, we've got it in, in, single-family residential, uh, R two. All on down the codes, and they all have the same statement about method of ma, measurement, and so we're. Just changing it to be consistent with the definition that we have just mentioned, next slide please. Um, again, here's the procedural summary, it is in your packets, I'm not gonna go through those dates. Um, to demonstrate that as the planning commission found, we did meet all of our notice requirements, et cetera, and we did, um, engage the public. Next slide please. And, uh, the planning commission, um, uh, made the following conclusions and recommendation. They found that, that the proposed amendment is consistent with the comp plan and is not detrimental to public welfare. It is necessary to clarify meaning or intent, and it is deemed to be in the public interest. And their recommendation was that the proposal, that the, the proposed amendment be approved. And the planning commission's finding conclusions and recommendations are in your packet. The next, um, uh, here, or the next amendment we have is related to RV and mini storage as a limited use in the C two zone. Next slide please. Um, the planning commission, after looking at a number of, uh. Potential zones, determined that the C two freeway commercial zone was the appropriate zone to allow this, next slide please. Um, and it requires a change in our round disparate matrix to list this as a limited use in the C two zone, next slide please. And we also went through, um, uh, a, a really detailed process to really kind of identify what. The design standards needed to be to make sure that we were maintaining the aesthetics. Environmental protection, that, uh, addressing issues like security and those sorts of things. And I'm not gonna read that all to you, it is in your packets and we did workshop this, next slide please. Um, a, again, more on the details, so we provided lots of standards for what they have to look like, next slide please. Um, and again, the procedural summary you will also find in the, in, in the findings, conclusions and recommendations, next slide please. And with regard to the RV and mini storage, the planning commission found, again, that it is consistent with the comp plan and is not detrimental to the public welfare. It is necessary to provide for a use not previously addressed and it is deemed to be in the public interest. And again, the recommendation was that the proposed amendment be approved. Next slide please. So you as a council, your decision is, um, what, what is before you and you won't. Do anything but the first reading tonight, when you get to the second reading, you're gonna have to make a motion to either approve, approve with modifications. Deny, or you could remand it back to the planning commission, so those are your options, next slide please. Um, again, exhibits to the ordinance, um, uh, two ninety-three, exhibit A is building heights amendment. And exhibit B is the RV and mini storage, and next slide please. And now, unless you have questions for me.
Yeah.
Uh, testimony.
Yep, we'll go ahead and take public, do, open the public hearing.
Lisa, do we, you wanna do it separately, can we do it all together? Your separate ones?
I'm sorry.
You need two separate?
Yeah, we can do them, we can do them together.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so, um, so we will open up the public hearing at ten oh seven, so if there's anybody here in council chambers or online. Who'd like to, um, include some comments on these proposed amendments, um, please go ahead and step up to the, raise your hand. And I can call on you to step up to the podium, and then, um, and if there's anybody online, please send a note. To Todd Henderson in chat feature and I will call on you, and, um. I don't think it's absolutely rule, but given our, given our timeframe, if we can limit these to three minutes apiece too, that would be fabulous.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, appreciate the opportunity to speak on this, I'm not speaking against this or for it, I just want to make, be aware of one thing. That this was have been talked about for several years now at a council level, and one of the things that comes up all the time is that. Are they offensive to the eye to have? A lot of large IRVs and stuff there, so what I noticed in here is they have a height of ten feet and then a obscure fence of six. Keep in mind that the average RV is over ten feet tall. It's like twelve-two, twelve-three is there, so as you move forward with the requirements. Keep that in mind when it comes to how large of a fence you're gonna have, if it is offensive, uh, to individuals, if they don't, if you don't want them to see that. You're gonna have to raise the fence height taller, or use common sense. And common sense is, most RVs are gonna be substantially higher than a fence you can do there. So if it's gonna be ten foot, realize you're not gonna make everybody happy, but at least there's some guidelines. So I'm not speaking against it or in favor, just use some common sense if we move forward on that, a six-foot fence. It's, the only thing a six-foot fence will do is keep me from looking over it.
Right, thank you very much, um, and for the record, uh, uh, Mike Kennedy, um, Liberty Lake, uh, do you need his address? Kelsey or just the name? Okay, all right, um, and do we have anybody online or anybody else here in chambers who'd like to speak on this proposed change? Nobody, Todd? All right, then we will close the public hearing at ten oh nine, we rarely have anybody comment, so we may have just set a record. All right, well, we will move on to, um, we have no resolutions, we'll move on to two of our first read ordinances, Kelsey, you're up.
Um, ordinance number two ninety-three, an ordinance of the city of Liberty Lake, Washington, amending the city of Liberty Lake Development Code. And the development code contained in the River District specific area plan.
Okay. All right, next first read.
Ordinance number one fifteen C, an ordinance of the city of Liberty Lake, Washington. Adding chapter nine to title eight of the Liberty Lake Municipal Code related to unlawful camping and storage of personal property. On public property and amending sections eight dash one A dash two and eight dash one A dash five. Of the Liberty Lake Municipal Code for consistency therein.
All right, we are up to fifteen C, Mayor Pro Tim. Oh.
She's gotta read.
That's right.
Ordinance number two ninety-four. An ordinance of the city of Liberty Lake, Washington, granting the right of franchise to Spectrum Fiber Network two LLC. For the operation of a telecommunications system in the city of Liberty Lake.
Great, thank you, um, so we are second read ordinance, first we'll go for any questions or discussion. Unless there are none. All right, um, since we are sec, second read, are there any public comments on this franchise agreement with Spectrum Fiber? Again, if there's anybody in the audience who'd like to speak, uh, or anybody online, please let me know. No, that doesn't look like we have anyone online, nobody's raising their hand in chambers. So, um, given no comments from the council or the public, we'll go ahead and go to, I need a motion in a second.
Uh, better mirror, I move, uh, ordinance number two ninety-four.
Perfect, we have motion, we have a second.
Second.
Second by council member Salberg, all right, um, there's no more discussion or comments, so go ahead and take a vote. Those in favor of approving ordinance two ninety-four, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, not hearing any, motion passes seven zero.
Madam, yes, can I make a motion to extend the meeting?
Yeah.
Uh, I'd like to extend it to eleven o'clock.
You have to make a motion that's.
I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting to eleven o'clock.
All right, do we have a second? No second? Okay, motion dies.
Then I do have a question.
Yes.
What happens if we don't get through the agenda in the time allotted?
Will you wanna try ten forty-five?
Why don't, why don't we just go forward and then we'll see what happens?
I'll, I'll, I'll pause at ten twenty-eight. All right, second read ordinance, one nineteen C, Kelsey.
Um, ordinance number one nineteen C, an ordinance of the city of Liberty Lake, Spokane County, Washington. Amending ordinance number one nineteen B, establishing the Liberty Lake Public Library and repeal, excuse me, repealing any provisions in conflict thereof.
Okay, all right, council discussion?
There, I'll make some comments just to.
Yes, okay, well, we'll let Sean go first.
Just so there's clarity on, and what's before you, so the revisions that you see here are what Kelsey and I worked together. From what she heard from the council, what I heard from the council and made sure that we had the similar, um, individual revisions. The things that all the council members had agreed that I had made changes or Kelsey had made changes, i.e. title, the whereas, the signatures. I just incorporated those because there wasn't an issue, so what you see in the red line format. Is all the individual items that the council voted on to incorporate into one nineteen C. I know there was a question that Phil had raised, Kelsey, and I wanted to address that, and that was with regard to the, um. Book ban and confirmed deny language in section two, um, and the thought was maybe bringing it up to a two G. As a new two G, the reason why I don't think we should do that is because in section two, it talks about initially the council's. Authority, and then the second part, it talks about the mayor's authority. And with regard to the paragraphs that would be below that, you're talking about the mayor and council or the mayor or council, so. It's inclusive of both the mayor and council, so that's why I think it's better left at the bottom, which is where it is right now, where you see it. Um, in addition to that, um, I think there's, I, I received a suggestion for some language on the book ban, which I agree. Um, it's just a, a change of the, of the verbiage relative to the confirming, so there isn't a question. Um, from the library perspective on book bans versus a book that's banned. I think the intent was if a book is banned by the Board of Trustees, then it will come up, and so in this context, it would be changing. The language, um, in the second sentence where it says the city council will confirm or deny. Any book bans by the Board of Trustees, instead it would just say the city council will confirm or deny any books banned by the Board of Trustees. So that way, if the book is in fact banned by the Board of Trustees, it would come up to the council for consideration. And similarly, just changing, um, the word ban in the last sentence. To a book banned by the Board of Trustees will be final, those would be the only, um, suggestions, change, changes there for consideration of the council.
So for the audience perspective, you don't mind, I'll just go ahead and summarize that, so it would say the. it would say the city council or mayor will not initiate any book ban. The city council will confirm or deny any books banned by the Board of Trustees. The city council's decision regarding a book banned by the Board of Trustees will be final. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments on that? Seems to. Hello, alright. Go ahead, Sean.
Um, Kelsey, did you get my email? Can you throw it up there? This is with regard to Jandy's request in section five. Okay. So this is, this is the sentence immediately after the new language about the end of, at the end of each quarter. Right now, it says at the end of each year, the Board of Trustees shall report to the city council and it goes on with everything else that's supposed to report. That's the information I think the Jan is talking about. I'm not going to have that at the end of the year. I'm going to put that in a report that goes to the state library and I'll give it to you. So the suggestion of the red line is what I sent to, to Kelsey would just say after the second quarter, the Board of Trustees shall also report to the city council showing the condition of the Board of Trustees' trust during the prior year, including, and then everything else that's supposed to be there. So then that way Janie can give the council the um, annual report that's supposed to go to the state library and then have those, those actual numbers. So you'll get this proceeding paragraph that's not there. You'll get quarterly reports and then after the second quarter, quarter, you'll get an annual report for the prior year.
Thank you. Do you have any questions on that?
We need to make a motion for that.
Yes.
Um, do I need to read it or just?
No, you can just reference what's, what.
I'll make a motion that we add to section five. Thank you, five, um, the language um, striking at the end of each year and adding after the second quarter also prior and including. That word, that's correct, okay.
Do we have a second or discussion, I guess, first?
I mean, you have a second.
Yeah.
Second by Councilmember Spencer. Any questions or discussion on that change by the city attorney? Right, not seeing any. Alright, all in favor of um, accepting the changes printed, presented on the screen as presented by the city attorney, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, any opposed? Alright, motion passes seven zero. Jed.
Jed.
I'm getting better at writing. Everybody's name down quickly. Okay, alright. And then. Anything after that?
No, that's it.
Okay. Alright. Um, probably should.
Yeah, so that's a, I, I, that's up to the council. I just was suggesting whether they want to do it or not.
Okay. We have a motion to accept the modified language um, at the end of section two that was discussed previously, changing books banned, books, book bans to books banned. It's a little hard to say.
Some of it is.
Okay, we have council, uh, first by Councilmember Cargill and second by Councilmember Fuller. Alright, any discussion on that wording clarification? I'm not hearing any. All in favor of accepting the wording clarification on that section, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, okay, let me do this. Say aye and hold your, keep your hands up. Get everybody in order this time. Alright, those opposed, please say.
Aye.
Okay, alright, motion passes five-two with uh, Councilmembers Kurtz and Dunn dissenting. Alright, so we've got those two language adjustments. Okay, does anybody else have any further comments or discussions? We've got this is the second read.
I just had a question and I think this was brought up in the trustee, uh, library, uh, board meeting this, uh, this last week regarding section six. We changed the uh, the wording in uh, in B to all voting members. Um, did we need to update section A or six A at all to reflect the possibility of having non-voting member, uh, non-voting individuals on the board?
You know, like we have adjunct members on a couple.
Right, I just wasn't sure if that needed to be in the ordinance or not.
Well, it, it does say, it only, we only have the board consisting of five individuals. So I guess if there's a desire to add non-voting members, but um, I guess I would ask the uh, library board to weigh in on that, um, maybe at a, at a later date and we can always go, we can always address that.
Yeah.
Um, because I think, I don't think they probably had much of a chance to really go through that and discuss. But that's just my two cents. Anybody else have a concern about that?
I, I, I will say one thing. I, I think you can probably address this just within the process of the confirmation process. Um, I don't know that necessarily needs to specifically change the ordinance when the confirmation comes as far as the appointments. The council can make the determination at that point whether they approve or not. I mean, certainly the council could put something in there, but I don't think it's mandatory.
Okay, but it, but the addition in six B says all voting numbers shall be city residents. So if we have somebody apply who's not, we can't accept them as it's written right now, correct?
Correct. Well, yes, I think the answer to that is yes, from standpoint of vote, voting, but um, I don't think it's critical that we do it now from the standpoint of you can also address that through the process of the applicants.
Gotcha. Right, do we have any questions on that?
Just, I was just thinking for an adjunct member, it shouldn't make a difference because they're non-voting.
Yeah. Okay, we'll, we'll let the library port you on that. If there needs to be an additional change down there, that should be an easy one to do. Okay, um, alright, we've gotten, had one comment who's, anybody else want to weigh in before we go to um, public comment before a vote?
Do we need a motion first or we just talk?
Uh, we had a motion.
Not yet.
Or we didn't know.
We've just done an amendment, so we just need to have a motion with regard to the amend, amended ordinance.
Alright, so do we have a motion um, to approve one nineteen C?
As amended.
As amended.
Make a motion to approve one nineteen C as amended.
We have a second.
Second.
Motion in a second by Councilmember Spencer. Alright, any further discussion from the council before I go to citizens and comment? Alright, not hearing any. Alright, this is the um, another chance for our citizens here in chambers, um, for those um, online, uh, to make a further comment. Again, uh, three-minute limit. Please, I've got two here. Please note if you are a um, city of Liberty Lake resident or not, um, and, and obviously we've got your name here. Uh, if you're online, please send a note to um, Todd Henderson in chat and we've got our three-minute limit. Three minutes will take us to ten twenty-seven. Or not. So let's take one comment and then we can decide, we can, or do we have a motion to extend the meeting to ten forty-five?
Make the motion to extend the meeting to ten forty-five.
We have a second.
So.
We have a second, I guess, remember Salberg, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, we're officially extended to ten forty-five. Thank you very much. Alright, first, um, Kim Gerard.
My name's Kim Gerard. I live in the city of Liberty Lake and I'm on the Board of Trustees for the Liberty Lake Library. I've been a school librarian. Every librarian I ever know is on a budget and is acutely aware that they are using public money to choose books for their patrons. They carefully monitor circulation numbers. They're kind of data nerds. Um, they don't buy materials that they, they know are not going to be checked out. They choose books based on collection development criteria for the people they serve, whether they agree with those patrons or not. There are books in every public library that librarians would not read or do not agree with, but they order them because they believe in their mission to serve their public. As a teacher, kids have brought books to school that I thought kids that age should not be reading. They talk about playing video games that I think they shouldn't be playing, but really that's not my business. As a parent, I didn't read all the books that my kids checked out, but I sure did know what was in their stacks and whether they were appropriate for every developmental age or not. It's my responsibility as a parent to know what my kids are reading, not the government's. A common thread of my US history classes from junior high through the many classes in college is of the brilliance of the framers of our constitution that they established a system of checks and balances among the branches of government. That magnificent safeguard is reflected in both state and local governance systems across this great country, including our own municipal code. Our city code already has a system of checks and balances in place to oversee the library board of trustees. We also have a system of checks and balances in place to ensure that the legislative branch cannot impose superfluous ordinances, excuse me, upon the citizens of the city. Therefore, I would like to encourage our mayor to recognize that the legislative branch of our city has overstepped its boundaries by pushing legislation that is not supported by the majority of citizens in this city. As evidenced by the ratio of comments in opposition to the ordinance. Madam Mayor, if this passes tonight, I encourage you to veto this ordinance that the majority of citizens oppose.
Thank you. Okay. You moved seats on us, Nada.
I, I'm not a Rajan, I'm not a resident of the city. Want to say two things. One, thank you all for persevering through all this to decide how you might feel about one or the other. I know it's painful. I've been to a bunch of these meetings. They've gone on late. So just thank you for your service. I get that. Even if we agree or disagree. And the other thing I want to say is, I'm really baffled because I don't understand what problem we're trying to solve here. I heard some people earlier tonight talk about how they didn't ever want to go in the library again because there was, might be a book in there that they didn't like. And I wonder, are these people like, do they not go on the internet because they might stumble across a, an internet site with something they don't like or find offensive? And the thing about a book is if you don't like it, you can just close it and not read it anymore. If you stumble across a book in the library on accident and it's offensive to you, just put it back, go check it out. And I don't think, and if they are, they should move, this is easy to solve. If, if there are books that might be offensive to small children, let's put them up on higher shelves. That's the easy solution. I just don't understand what the, the big issue is here because if you don't like a book, you just have to stop reading it. And there's a lot of books that I don't like and I just don't read them. So to me, that's just a simple solution. I don't understand why this is such a big deal. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Did we have anybody else here in chambers? Brad Hamlet and then DG Garcia.
I'm going to take the rest of my three minutes. I don't think I got my three minutes, Mayor.
Go back and watch it together.
We, we, well, I don't want to, I don't want to do that. Okay, so, um, I have stood before this body many times and I've said many times, there really is no need for us to be here at this point. And I'm, I agree with the previous speaker, I don't get it. I do understand a desire to be uh, notified under, uh, about policy and policy change. I get all that. I understand all that. This thing, this part of this new ordinance, I don't agree with. And I think it, you say, it, it just, it nullifies the book banning thing that I worked with, uh, our um, Councilman Fuller. And I've talked to other councilmen on, I'm a reasonable person, I believe. I've tried to resolve this by talking to different people on the council, trying to come up with a resolution that we all can live with. And, but I cannot live with this one. Individually approve or reject all current Liberty Lake library policies retroactive to each of the latest adopted versions currently in place as of February twenty-one. That is giving the council license to ask us to rewrite, to um, restrict access or whatever else they may think deemed necessary in the library. And it all really boils down to people saying they want to protect children. Our library, as you can see, is a safe haven for children. We just showed that tonight. A ton of children use that library. We have never had any issues with uh, children being exposed to whatever people are afraid of, children being exposed to in our library. It just bothers me to see that in there as a board member, as a citizen, as a grandfather uh, uh, of, of having kids gone through uh, the school system and library, using libraries throughout their entire lives. This one, really, I take issue with. And I had conversation with the councilman that proposed this and we agreed to disagree. I disagree strongly. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, next up DG Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers and honorable citizens. I appreciate and value all of you. I appreciate and value you also, Mr. Cargill. We don't always see eye to eye. But I think you would be interested in this. My grandson, who is a genius, is in the eighth grade with the other geniuses. And he is currently reading a book. That book is prescribed to all of the students. And throughout the chapters, it says retard, retarded, retard, over and over and over again. I would not want that book banned and I helped my grandson move through the chapters. But we wouldn't want that. And me, being a person who was on the spectrum, as we've talked about, understand what being a high-functioning person with autism goes through. It's a lifetime journey. But I wouldn't have wanted anyone to restrict me from becoming the person that I am, the person that's invisible, the person inside that's invisible to the rest of the world. So while my grandson reads that book and I explain to him those things as he, they come up, that's our job. That's our job. We have to do our job. The same way you all want to sit in front of the farmer's market and do your job. This is the hardest job you have to do. And that is to let people have their rights and their freedoms. And when anyone continues to fall on the idea of being one of faith, what you've done is used something in order to dismiss something else that you're doing. Stop falling on faith because that faith may not be genuine. I hope for all of you. I hope for the two of us who have something very similar in our world, that we understand there are going to be things out there. It may not be what we want, but we have to make sure people have the right, the privilege and the freedom to see them. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Alright, Teresa Tapal Hunt.
Teresa Tapal Hunt, citizen of Liberty Lake, library board of trustee member. Um, so my comments are around specifically to ask, um, as Brad mentioned, um, individually approving, rejecting all current library board, hall, public library policies retroactive. Um, we went through multiple discussions. We've had multiple workshops about this, whether the intent of of rejecting and approving our um, policies are specific to the collection policy that we changed on October eighteenth, which then prompted this entire movement is relevant to this conversation. Um, I also want to point out that it was mentioned ear- earlier about the RCWs and no jurisdiction over, from city council to the library, but there is jurisdiction that's already written in the ordinance as it was developed twenty years ago, that gives you oversight of appointing us and also removing us from our positions. Um, the other thing you have to consider is we review multiple legal documents and consider those with regards to the policies that we develop. And so we consider the First Amendment, which Councilmember Cargill often speaks about. Um, Article seven of the Library Bill of Rights and the Freedom to Read Act. This is a conversation about morality, not the constitution. And many of you who have concerns around morality and policing the policies that we've developed based on your own vision of morality are not considering the fact that we are following the law of the land. So I appeal to those of you who are probably Christians to consider Romans thirteen, one through seven. It is asked of you, it is told to you by God to obey the law of the land, for he is the one who has placed the government over us. So if we are following the constitution and we So if we are following the Constitution and we are following the law of the land as it appeals to information of access within the library and content and allowing the entire city to be able to have information through the library, and you want to police that by reviewing and rejecting or approving all existing and previous policies, are you actually standing up for what is written in the Constitution, or is it morality? And those are my questions to you. So as you are going through, I know you've already seconded to approve the amended changes to the ordinance, but I want you guys to at least think about that verbiage in two F. What is the reason for approving and rejecting the policies if you know that we are following the law of land?
Thank you. All right, and I think I saw Mike Kennedy put in a paper. You're up next. Mike?
Thought it was further down the list.
Nope.
Which has happened many times. This is a no win situation. I guarantee you, this is just, this is just a friggin nightmare. On it. We have a situation is that banning books has been the discussion, but to me, it's not banning books. It's who has the authority to ban books. That is, to me, has been the issue. It came to the council. The council majority voted, we're not going to ban books, and yet here we are seven months later still talking about this. To me, what I try to do is figure out, how can we stop the bleeding? The bleeding, which to me would be very simple, is that the council would vote that we're not banning books. And likewise, the library would look and say, we're not banning books, because that takes it aside. My experience prior to being a council member, during a council member, this, I mentioned once before, this is not the first time it's come up. This is the first time it ever got to this level. The reason why I mention is this. What has happened in the past is that the council is elected by the individuals to make the decisions for us and keep us out of the courts. So what has happened was we brought the council in the past, is that, hey, we might have a situation here. We always look at, we refer to the attorney, is it, do we have any legit, possibly get sued for something like this? That's always a priority that comes up. And when we go in executive council, that's what we talk about. What is our exposure? And the exposure comes down to somebody has to be able to make that decision. And under our form of government, that we, the twelve thousand people, have said, that's going to be the council. We don't all agree with the council. I don't agree with the council. I don't agree with every council member. But the thing that I'm most concerned about is this. When I hear individual citizens or not coming forward and saying, the mayor needs to veto this order. The sole purpose of council besides budget is to keep the, the city out of lawsuits. That's why we have attorneys to advise us, not to give us permission, to advise us to keep us out of lawsuits. If we were to ban a book, any book or literature, the council or the trustees, more than likely, we're going to be facing this lawsuit. Someone is going to pounce on this city and say, we want to make an example of you. So if we don't ban books, if that's our policy, that no one ban books, I think we can eliminate the problem. But if we go to the extent of saying that we're going to veto this, I believe what that is a clear statement that the council does not have the final say so. That concerns me as a citizen. That scares the hell out of me. Because my vote is precious to me. I loan it to you. Don't screw it up. Thank you.
Okay, do we have anybody online? Oh, while, while we're getting you back here, Lynn, do we have anybody online, Todd? Huh? Okay. We'll, we'll go ahead with Lynn, and then we'll go to Cory online.
This whole situation really makes me want to weep. I am extremely passionate about the First Amendment and the Constitution of the United States. I think that this revised ordinance is only going to embolden those people in the public that want to ban books. There's no question that you have the authority to rewrite the ordinance. You can do it. The question is, should you do it? I think that once those bans begin, the dam is going to break. There will be one after another. And with the changes that are in the ordinance, it will come to you as the council. And I think if the council is comprised in the same way that it is today, that I think you will ban books. I've heard a council member here say that they believe we ought to be able to establish a minimum standard of decency regarding the library. That frightens me. Whose standard are you going to apply? I do not believe that you should be able to determine what is morally correct for twelve thousand people in this city. Your actions are going to lead to litigation. It's going to put black eye and a stain on this city that I love. I hope to God that it won't happen. But I'm telling my heart that please, don't let it happen. But I think that that's where we're headed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, it looks like we have one person online. I don't have a last name. Cory, I'd like to call on you when you, when you join here. Can you provide your, your full name and whether or not you live in the city limits of Liberty Lake?
Hello, this is Erica Fichetti speaking on Cory. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I was there earlier this evening, and I just want to come in and say that I am in support of the changes to the ordinance. I feel like the city council and the mayor has been bashed all evening, that you have been told you had better veto this, you had better do this, the four of you are going to lose your position, will vote you out. Ninety percent of us do not feel that the library should have control. I'm disgusted that I'm put in that category. I don't feel that way. I want you to know where I stand. I want you guys to please consider that the library shouldn't have the final say. These books are disturbing. The book that we're discussing currently, and it is not a ban. Just keep it out of the view of children. Put it where they can't see it. I mean, if the Fifty Shades of Grey could be rented out, would you allow a twelve year old to come in and rent this, check this movie out of the library? I hope not. Twelve year olds can't go view an R rated movie. We put safeguards on our internet, so why would we put this book in view of children? It's just not content that they should be seeing. We just want you guys to have a final say. Our tax dollars are going to the library. And please consider that. Not all of us, I know that many of those of us who are on the other side did not show up, did not speak up. But there are several of us, and I think it's the majority, that do not want this to be the situation where the library has control. That's, we support you. We support you. Please, just consider those of us who are out there. There's many of us who maybe didn't speak up, but I spoke to several today who even told me, I will never go into the library again, because I'm disgusted with how they have let this material in, and they are not concerned that our kids are viewing it. That's all I have to say. Thank you so much for your service. I appreciate all you've done for the city. And I love Liberty Lake. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to extend?
So moved.
To?
Eleven.
Do we have a second to extend till eleven? Second, my councilmember Kurt, all, all in favor of extending meeting till eleven? Please say aye. Any opposed? All right, we're officially extended till eleven. All right, so hearing, no more comments. Yes.
After the citizen comment, are we allowed to say anything more? Or do we have to go straight to the vote?
Oh, we can take more comments.
Can I, yes, thank you. First of all, I want to say thank you to my friend DG for her comments. I appreciate it. I I, I think unfortunately, a lot of the rhetoric has kind of gotten out of hand as well. I always appreciate the respectful exchange, exchange of ideas. I really appreciated some of the things that Catherine had to say, even though we have agreed to disagree, but I, I think when people bring up, you know, Nazis and fascists and terrorists and egomaniacs and barbarians, and I mean, all this stuff, you, you lose the argument. I thought that the last meeting we had on this was really telling, because we adopted language that said we would never initiate a book ban. And what, you know, it was brought up earlier in the, in the public comments, why did we use the word initiate? Because we had a member of the board say that they thought there might be a situation in the future. They couldn't imagine what that situation might be. But they thought there might be a situation in the future where they might have to step in. And so initiate was added so that if the board did ban a book, then it would come to us. Otherwise, we have no say in the process anymore, according to this. Even after we added that in, there's still this talking point that we're up here deciding to ban a book. We're not up here deciding to ban a book. Obviously, this council's been criticized for taking six months to come up with a solution on this issue. I recall the last meeting, again, we had members of the library board come up and criticize us for that. What they didn't mention was the fact that part of the reason it took so long is because we tried to come to an agreement. We did two workshop sessions. There were so many other meetings in between those workshop sessions where we were trying to throw ideas out on the table to see what we could come up with. Obviously, this is a passionate issue. I completely understand that. The library board says that they were doing us a favor by taking the politics out of the decision making process. To me, that's not their decision to make. That's the council's decision to make. We got the feedback of everybody on this council. Everyone on this council had the opportunity to propose ideas. Library board members had the opportunity to propose ideas, and we included many of their proposed ideas. We added the council liaison to board meetings as they suggested at their, one of their meetings, I believe it was in March. Tonight, we changed the language requesting the annual report in the second quarter. The library board suggesting added language to the ordinance that specifically addressed book banning. We did that. To me, if you are opposed to banning books, you should be in favor of this ordinance, because it says very specifically that the council cannot do it. Council even adopted language that specifically said we would not write or rewrite policies. So the majority of the council has, I believe, compromised in good faith. Come up with a solution here. And not everybody gets what they want. If I was writing it, I probably would have written it a different way. Other members of the, of the, of the board are not getting what they want. Other members of the council are not getting everything that they want. But I will just point out, and, and I thought it was great to have councilmember Baird here, as well as hear from the comments of former councilmember Severs, who emailed us this afternoon with some important comments. And they said, this is from councilmember Baird, that a careful read puts the book ban issue to bed. At the end of the day, this issue is simple. Is the board going to be accountable, or is it not? And councilmember Severs in his email this afternoon said, the board should not be allowed to make independent decisions and should absolutely have to work with and advise the council. I think that the changes that we're considering tonight are the start of a process of hopefully, hopefully, hopefully opening up lines of communication while respecting the role of the library board, and I think that's a good balance. And I will be in voting in favor of this, and I would encourage other council members to do so as well. Thank you.
And yeah, oh, go ahead. That's from Kurtz.
So I had some things I wanted to say earlier, and I don't know if they really matter at this point, but I think the one thing that does is that there, the book ban phrase was the thing that I specifically asked to be taken out of the ordinance, that we will not restrict access, was the actual important piece that needed to be in here. And that's where there was a hard stop with majority voting to keep that intentionally out of the ordinance. And that is what the public is still talking about. That somehow along the way, this council is going to restrict access in the library. That is an unresolved issue. We did not get to the middle. We did not compromise. It was a hard no. So if it's a hard no, we need to take the vote. We aren't going to get any further by talking about it. Because we haven't gotten to the middle. We haven't addressed the public's concern that this council is going to restrict access. It was intentionally voted down. So we've got to stop talking about it. And I would like to move forward. I, I do believe that this is going to pass. And I do believe that this body does need a check and balance of our own powers. If it does pass, I would ask that the mayor consider vetoing it and that that action be done swiftly. I don't believe we should wait another ten days to let this fester in the community. I think a decisive action is needed, one way or the other, so that the public and the council can move on. We are not Liberty Lake together right now. And there's a lot of steps we need to do to heal what has been fractured in this community because we had a copycat ban come up in our community. And if we're not going to address the piece about restricting access, then we need to move on.
Thank you. All right, any other, councilmember Van Orman?
While we're talking about restriction, realize that where the policymaking happens, that's with the board of trustees. They make all the policies. We either deny or approve. We don't make the policy. They do. It's still in their, their realm. The reason why I'm here and looking at putting in new ordinances, I was there from the beginning. It's interpretation of what we had for an ordinance, that the policy has always come before the city council. I don't think that we want to go to the process of taking our municipal library that we currently support within our budget and turning around and doing a library district that you have an additional fifty cents per thousand. That's not helping anybody.
That discussion's been off the table. The city attorney went through that.
So the, the point is, I think with all of the information that we've got back and forth and going forward, those things are going to be addressed. Again, with the book ban, it was when we had Shauna stand up and say, we may need to go ahead and do one in the future. That's where that language came in. So yes, I will be voting for this. But I do want to hear if there's anything else that we need to tweak.
All right, any other questions, comments? Councilmember Dunn?
I'll just throw one. I really enjoyed the librarian and trustees reporting tonight of the prosperity and growth of our municipal library. I listened with great intent to the accomplishments and the achievements, and I really didn't hear any fundamental flaws, cracks, or issues that would lead us to say something fundamentally needs to be changed. I concur with the observations of our community in the reference that I just don't yet understand why these actions are taken. This action, for me, has been extraordinary on two counts. I think I share with Mayor Chris, the longest standing continuous tenure of participation with this city. And I have never seen such a broad cross section and quantity of people engaged in the actions of this council. The second part of that is the fundamental lack of response from this council to the input of the community. These two really stand out in my mind from this experience. I am opposed to one nineteen C.
Any other comments before we move on? All right, not seeing any. Before I do take the vote, just for the public's information, so if this passes tonight, there are three things that I can do as mayor. I can sign it, in which case it becomes, goes into effect in five days?
After publication.
Yeah, five days after publication. I cannot sign it, in which case in ten days, it still goes into effect without my signature. Or I can veto it, which by law requires a written response, I think, you know, dissenting opinion in a court. So those are the three options. I am not in a place where I can commit to anything tonight. I am not in a place where I can commit to anything tonight. I have an idea of where I'm going. But there are other, there are things I want to make sure I've got in place in my head. This has been a long process. A lot has been said, a lot has, a lot has taken place. So I want to make sure that I give absolutely careful consideration to what, which of those three actions I am going to take. I will do every, everything in my power to have that by the end of the week and not wait ten days. Whenever that decision might be. So without hearing anything else, we're up at ten fifty seven. I'll go ahead and call for the vote. So all in favor of approving modified ordinance one nineteen C, please say aye and keep your hand up.
Aye.
And those opposed?
There you go.
All right. Motion passes four to three. So that's where we are. As I said, I will, I will have my response by the end of the week. If I do choose to veto, it would, the council can bring it back to try to override. It would take a fifth member of the council to override. All right, next we have emergency ordinances. We don't have any. We have introduction of upcoming agenda items. Go ahead, councilmember Kurt.
I'd like to talk at our next meeting about the length of our meetings. I would like to talk at the next meeting about the length of our meetings. We can't keep going until eleven o'clock. I know some of this has been about the library, but that will probably continue.
Yep.
So we either need to be looking to meet every week or figuring something different out. The public can't effectively engage for meeting until eleven. It's hard on us to.
Good. We'll put that on. Anybody else? All right. Lastly, we have, without another extension, we have, do you have another opportunity for citizen comments? If anybody would like to make a comment, anybody online? Right, not hearing any. Move on to, we don't have an executive session and then break, that brings us to adjournment. So if there's nobody opposed, we will go ahead and adjourn meeting at ten fifty eight. Thanks, everybody.